A special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Colrain Township convened on March 23, Tuesday, 2021. We are, Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Rajapal.
Here.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
Thank you. Now, the next on the agenda is Executive Sessions. The Board of Trustees will adjourn for the Board of Trustees meeting.
Yes, I'd like to recommend a motion that the Board of Trustees go into Executive Session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 to discuss the employment, discipline, termination, and/or compensation of public employees, and in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to discuss pending or imminent litigation and court action with the township attorney.
I would motion that we go into Executive Session to discuss such things.
I second it. Roll call please, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Rajapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Do we need to mention that our attorney will be going in with us?
Okay, all right. We'll convene, adjourn for the special meeting, Executive Sessions. The Board of Trustees are back from the Executive Sessions. Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Rajapal.
Here.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Nothing to report.
Anything to report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
So, we have motioned to start a regular meeting, or Board of Trustees meeting.
Allegiance.
Let's stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's stand here for a moment of meditation. Let us pray for the family who lost, that loved ones lost in that shooting in Colorado. Also, we lost our police officer. Let's pray for their family, and may God be with them. And also, let us pray for our country, and also, all this COVID-19 situation going on. We pray that everyone safe and healthy. Have a seat, please. The next on the agenda is public hearing, and we have a motion to conduct a public hearing.
Yes, I'm going to recommend a motion to open the public hearing, and then we will ask Mr. Iona to provide a staff presentation.
I would motion that we open the public hearing on zoning map amendment ZA 2021-01 for Abbey Town subdivision.
I second it. Any discussions?
No.
Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Rajapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Before we start, how many people are out there?
Mike, do you remember how many were on the sign-in sheet?
There are currently three signed in.
Good day. Would that put us over our room limit?
I believe so.
We're at nine right now, currently.
Okay.
It would be twelve.
Okay.
You want to call them?
As long as they can hear us outside, I guess.
For the record, we do have a TV out there that's broadcasting this live, so with slight delay.
Maybe we need to turn off a couple of the mics.
Oh, I'm sure. Good? Okay. Might be the location of the computer, too, so. Is it? Okay. Well, I'll do my best to hear. Okay. So, the public hearing tonight is for zoning case ZC 2021-01, and the submitted request is a zoning map amendment from R4 and R6 to PDR. And the applicant is proposing to construct 68 single-family detached homes within a The application tonight is a preliminary development plan with a zone change. That's the first part of the plan development process. There are two parts to the plan development process. The first, again, is that preliminary development plan, and the second is the final development plan. Tonight, we are here to take final action on the preliminary development plan. If the Board chooses to approve the plan, it does go to the final development stage, at which point the zoning commission takes final action. Here, you can see the site in question. It's located approximately 1,300 feet west of the intersection of Pippin Road and Kemper Road. The site is currently occupied by vacant land. Land uses within the surrounding area consist of moderate density, single-family homes to the north of the site in question, larger single-family lot homes to the north of the site in question, to the south of the site is currently rural land. The area immediately east is currently occupied by a church, a church-school, a fire department, one large lot, single-family home, as well as an additional smaller lot, single-family home. The peripheral area to the east is currently occupied by detached, single-family residential dwellings, and those dwellings average about an approximate lot size of 7,500 square feet. There's also a church on the other side of Pippin Road. The peripheral areas, or, excuse me, the area to the west, immediate area to the west is currently occupied by large lot detached, single-family residential dwellings, and the peripheral area to the west, on the west side, or on the left side of this slide, that's the Huntersden subdivision, that's a planned development community as well, and the lot sizes there are approximately 1,400 square feet. Here is a picture, looking east towards the site in question. The blue arrow in the middle of the slide is the location approximately of where the vehicular access to the site would be. This is a picture looking southwest across the site. Again, you can see it's currently occupied by vacant land. There's a mixture of cleared land, as well as a mature tree canopy. Here's an additional photo looking west across the site, and then a photo looking northwest across the site. So, the site in question is currently zoned R4 and R6. That's the same zoning district as the area immediately north, south, and west of the site in question. You can see a small portion of the site on the east side, in that darker yellow, is currently zoned R6. So, the site is really zoned R4 and R6. The R4 zone permits detached, single-family residential dwellings at a moderate density. That's a 14,000-square-foot minimum lot size. And then, the R6 zone, that's a higher-density residential zone that permits single-family, two-family, three-family, and four-family units at a pretty high density. And then, again, the site in question is currently, both those districts, and the proposal is to rezone the site to PDR, Planned Development Residential. And the intent of PDs, as stated in the zoning resolution of Colrain Township, is really to allow for flexibility that will result in higher-quality development. It's to ensure that development, PD development, has recreational facilities and open spaces, while also preserving the existing landscape, and it's really also encourage sound planning principles in the way that the overall development is designed, the way that the buildings are arranged, the way that open space is utilized, and the way that they use the existing topography and other site features. The fourth point on the intent of planned development districts is to create coordinated designs that don't adversely impact the surrounding areas. And then, fifth, to allow for creative development that conforms to the goals and objectives of the Colrain Township Comprehensive Plan. So, here you can see the proposed development plan. The applicant proposes to construct 68 detached, single-family homes on the site in question. The overall density of the development is 2.35 units per acre. The applicant does show the provision of 8.47 acres of open space. You can see the open space is clustered here, you know, along the peripheral areas of the development, mainly along the west side, as well as kind of going through the middle of the development, and then over here on the south side of the development. The proposed setbacks would be 25 feet in the front yard for lots 1 through 13, and 30 feet for lots 14 through 16. The side yard would be 5 feet and 10 feet. The rear yard would be 35 feet. Vehicular access is provided from Kemper Road. The site in question does provide a stub access to the immediate property to the east. There is provision of entrance signage along the entrance of Kemper Road, and then there is sidewalk provided throughout the development. The applicant also proposes to, and this comes up later in the agenda this evening, the applicant has also submitted for a waiver from the sidewalk requirements along Kemper Road. The applicant's applying for that waiver. If that is approved, they would pay the fee in lieu into the sidewalk fund, and then they also propose to provide access, sidewalk access, through the development, going down off of the access road of Kemper, and then going in through the development, up along Lot 17, and then up through the fire station.
So, in the subdivision, there'll be a sidewalk. Then, the sidewalk?
Raji-
Sorry. Inside the subdivision, there'll be sidewalks. They're building sidewalks in the complex, right?
Correct, yes. So, there'll be sidewalk along both sides of the street, all the way throughout the subdivision.
Thank you.
And, so, let me see.
The plan later is to, the township, to put sidewalks on the other side of Kemper. Is that part of the-
No, the current proposal right now is for access through the development to be provided, again, so there's a requirement that we have, that we want to always see development that connects to our pedestrian infrastructure, right? So, what they-
But it's going to connect by just crossing the street, is that?
No.
No, okay.
So, what they propose to do is, they propose to provide that connection, so, looking at the slide here, you can see the laser pointer on the bottom-left portion of the slide here. So, any new development, whether it's a residential, commercial, subdivision, large, small, either, has to build sidewalk along that road frontage. It's a requirement, it's in our sidewalk plan, and the reason that we do that is, and the reason that you'll approve that is, is so that you have a pedestrian connection along that frontage. And that's really the intent of that resolution, is to get that pedestrian connection, and in those areas where it's either topography or unsafe or otherwise, you can apply for a waiver from that-
Where the guardrail is, you're talking about?
Yes. And pay that fee in lieu for that segment. So, what the applicant has proposed to do here is, at the previous zoning commission meeting, there was considerable amount of concern regarding the safety of that segment along Kemper Road. What they propose to do is pay the fee in lieu, in addition to providing that connection through the development at a lower grade, at a much safer area. If you go back and look at the first picture I showed, you can see there's, there really is a blind spot.
And it goes up through the fire?
Yeah. So, you can see there's a major blind spot here, kind of coming over and then walking here, so that's one of the big reasons that, you know, coming back, this was a big amendment in the plan from the previous submittal, was to, you know, figure a way to do that pedestrian connection. So, this is the proposal, again, take it through the development, and then punch back up here through the fire station. That's at the top of the ridge, so you're going to have much better visibility going into Pippin and the intersection of Pippin where the schools are and all the other stuff.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I just want to make sure.
And to further clarify, in the Connect Colrain sidewalk plan that we have adopted, we have what we call Priority Two sidewalk gaps. The stretch of Kemper Road from, I believe it is Hunter Green Drive, all the way over to Pippin Road, was identified as a gap, so this would help to solve some of those gaps, and then the pavement in lieu of sidewalks will help to further provide dollars that we can use to fill other gaps on this Priority Two gap.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, so that's the sidewalk, and then, looking at the landscape plan, you can see the provision of, you know, you have street trees, there's a significant landscape buffer located along the west side of the property, there's also a fence located along the west side of the property. Those pieces, some of those pieces have been added, the landscape buffer on the west side of the property was added to since the prior submittal. As far as drainage and utilities, you do have retention and detention facilities here, located on the west side of the property. And then, again, so the requests are as follows, it's, again, for a zone change from that R6 and that R4, and then that very small portion of the site that's R6, to the Planned Development Residential, as well as the Preliminary Development Plan approval, those kind of go hand in hand, to allow for the development of 68 single-family lots. In doing so, the applicant is asking for variations, which are a part of the PD process. So, if you apply for a PD, whether it's for residential, business, and industrial, mixed use, or any of the PDs, you can ask for variations, and the zoning ordinance allows for variations, provided that they're consistent with the intent and purpose of the Planned Development districts. And the variations that the applicant is asking for are a variation from the minimum lot size, as well as the minimum lot width, and then the front yard setback and a side yard setback. And a lot of that, those variations, really come from the fact that there's a significant amount of open space in this development, whereas in a typical development or a by-right development, most of that open space would just be in somebody's backyard. As far as statutes or findings for approval of a preliminary development plan and the corresponding zone change, the zoning resolution does state the following. It states that, one, the proposal must be consistent with the comprehensive plan; two, that the proposed uses will have a beneficial effect on the community; three, that the internal streets will properly connect with the surrounding road network. So, that goes back to, like, are there stubs, street stubs, to properties that could be developed in the future? Number four-
Mike, can you go back to the previous slide?
Number two items, number two, explain to us, the proposed use will have a beneficial effect on the community. How do you, what do you mean by that?
So, is it, will the proposed use have a benefit to the community? Is it going to benefit the community, or would it be a detriment to the community? So, will these homes be a benefit, or could they be a detriment? Or would, you know, for any PD, it's kind of general language?
Yeah.
So, you use that, and then you take the proposal, and then run it through a lens of what is beneficial to the community? You know, does it have an economic benefit?
You underline that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then, so, number four is, you know, are the roads that provide access to the site, so Kemper Road, is that accessible, and will it be able to carry the traffic needed for this development? Or do there need to be any infrastructure improvements on Kemper Road? And then, number five, that any common space areas are transferred to an HOA or some organization that will be responsible for that maintenance into perpetuity? Number six, that the development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the PDs, which I read earlier in this presentation. And finally, number seven, that any of the agencies and departments in charge of review, like your utilities, your stormwater, your traffic folks, the fire department, any of those individuals have done their review, and there's no major issues with the development. As it pertains to those variations, Section 9.3.6B states that you can have a variation from the design standards, and it can be granted when it's determined that those design elements, natural features, and public amenities, you know, are actually beneficial in that it's in keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning resolution. So, the recommendation of the zoning commission, based on staff's presentation and recommendation, which was for approval, is to approve this plan, and that's subject to the following conditions. The first, that the front facade of all dwellings contain an element of stone, brick, or other masonry unit, so that's the front facade of the building, has to have, you know, that kind of mixture of materials. B, that the minimum housing size shall be 1,400 square feet for one-story residential dwellings, and 1,600 square feet for two-story residential dwellings. All homes shall feature a basement, and then that basement shall not be considered part of the floor area established within Condition 2. D, that a plan for the intent and treatment of the open space areas be included within the final development plan, and that plan should address the manner in which those common open space areas are treated and developed. So, there's a considerable amount of open space, this condition is aimed at making sure that open space is protected, and there's a plan for maintenance of those open spaces. E, that a community amenity be provided within the development, and such amenities may include, but are not limited to, a playground, provision of paved walking trails or bike trails, and finally, number F, that a homeowners association be formed to manage the care for the common open space, retention ponds, fencing, and vegetative buffers. G, that the maintenance of the vegetative buffers, fencing, and open space areas on the approved and final development plan be included and outlined within HOA documents for Abbey Town, and that maintenance is conducted in a manner that promotes and fosters the intent of those buffers, which is to screen the new development from existing development; that a street lighting district be set up for this development in accordance with the standards of Colrain Township, and that a waiver be granted for the sidewalk connection along Kemper Road. J, that the future sale of the panhandle portion of the tract to the panhandle portion of the site, which is that little skinny part of the site to the north, that any future sale of that should be done to the adjacent property owners, and it should be permitted to occur as an administrative amendment to the proposed development plan. And then, K, that the proposed development meets applicable standards and regulations for other development review agencies. And that approval also includes the approval of the variations from the underlying height, Aryan height standards of the zoning district. And this approval was based on the following. Staff, as well as the zoning commission, found the proposal to be consistent with the surrounding areas. You know, the proposed density, character, and form of the proposal, as conditioned, is generally consistent with the surrounding areas, which include very-high-density residential detached, single-family on the peripheral area to the east, which you can see on the slide. The area to the north also has a higher moderate-density detached, single-family homes. There's a PD in the area to the peripheral area to the west. While there are some large lot, single-family homes that are located closer to the development site, there's also uses like churches, churches and schools, fire departments, located within close proximity of the site. So, you do have kind of a diverse area here, and, you know, staff, as well as the zoning commission, does believe that the plan would be consistent with what exists in the surrounding areas. As it pertains to some of the other findings and statutes required for making the approval of the plan, staff, as well as the zoning commission, found that the plan was consistent with the comprehensive plan, and they found that to be consistent for the following reasons. In the comp plan, it calls this area out for single-family residential uses, they're building single-family residential uses. The comp plan states that residential uses may also expand within this area, but that the expansion will involve several of the large lots in this character, and this was one of those that was identified so long ago, and that any new homes should be single-family detached housing in subdivisions that fit in with the surrounding developments. This is a subdivision, it's detached, single-family homes, and it's consistent with other development in the surrounding area. The comp plan also states that any new development should encourage additional connections to the sewer system, and this development will be connected to the sewer system. Another point that was brought from the comprehensive plan, and this is all in the staff packet, is to develop a property maintenance program. That's not something that's being done here, but it's something that we wanted to mention. As it pertains to new developments and including new roadway connections to the maximum extent possible, this site does provide a stub on the west side of the development. That stub goes to the only true developable piece of property located adjacent to the site. Everything else surrounding the site is a large lot residential, it wouldn't make much sense to stub a street to those areas. However, that stub could be, could lead to a new development at some point. The comp plan also states that any new development should create methods of dealing with stormwater management through the use of green spaces, minimal lot coverage, and landscaping to absorb runoff. If you look at this proposal here, you can see there's a significant amount of green space that's conserved. Green space is nature's natural runoff, you know, it prevents runoff. So, what the applicant's really doing here is, they're saving our hillsides, they're saving a lot of the flora and fauna that exists in the area, they're creating significantly less impervious surface with this development when compared to a traditional development. Number two, the proposed zone change will also benefit the community, as it's going to preserve, again, and protect those natural open spaces. Number three, as it pertains to the street extensions within the existing development, you know, it does provide access to those areas that are developable. Number four, as far as access to the development from Kemper Road, the applicant submitted a traffic impact study to Hamilton County Engineers that was found to be valid, and it doesn't seem like there's a significant amount of infrastructure improvements that are needed for access to the development. Number five, staff and the zoning commission do find that the proposal was, is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning resolution as it pertains to planned developments. And again, here you can see the difference between the proposed development and then a by-right development. The development on the right side of this slide is a previous development that was approved by right. By-right development, as you all know, is something that you can do in Colrain Township. If you go and you have a site that's zoned a certain way, you can go in and develop that site by right without any approval from zoning, the Board of Trustees, or otherwise. You go to Hamilton County, and you can build a subdivision. You know, one of the things I want to point out on this site is, there's a lot of topography, there's steep topography throughout the site, and, you know, when you do a by-right development, you're typically not looking at preserving that topography. You're kind of doing size of site divided by minimum lot area equals development. So, you kind of go in, you tear everything out, you re-grade it flat, and then you go back and you try to recreate, you know, some of the stuff that was there. With the Abbey Town development, you are preserving a lot of those steep hillsides. Again, that's a lot of the stuff that helps prevent that water runoff. You're preserving a lot of the existing flora and fauna that exists on the site, you're working with the topography, you have a significant less, significantly less impervious surface area for this development, which also helps, again, with the runoff, and then long-term costs associated with the street network. And here you can see, again, so, one of the big differences here between the by-right development and Abbey Town is that you do have these smaller lots, but again, a lot of those, the lots are smaller, but you have a significant amount of greater- of those, the lots are smaller, but you have a significant amount of greater open space. And what you actually have is an overall density that's less than what would be permitted And as it pertains to the variation from the underlying height and Aryan height requirements, the submitted development plan, again, does cluster those, those lots in tight to achieve all those benefits. Preservation of open space, preservation of the natural topography, reduction in runoff and impervious surface, and a reduction in overall long-term maintenance associated with the reduced footprint of new streets. So for that reason, staff, as well as the zoning commission, found that, that clustering of lots was appropriate, and as such, those variations from the Aryan height requirement were appropriate. So that's all I have for my staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions before we open it up to the.
Sure. Thanks, Mike, that's a good report you've put together. On the panhandle portion of the property, I don't know if you can bring that up on the slide or not, you mentioned something that that would be available for future sale only to the adjacent property owners, and if they weren't interested in it, that's something that the homeowners association would perpetually maintain, without putting a fence on it, or I would hate to see a little ten or fifteen-foot wide strip of land with a fence on both sides of it, because this mentions putting fencing in various areas.
Fencing is not proposed for that area. You know, I'm sure that those, those individual property owners probably already maintain that little strip, I don't, I'm sure they probably don't cut the grass just up to that line, or maybe even know where that property is.
Right, but the way the property.
But there is no fencing proposed for that, and that would go into an HOA. It's just one of those quirky things about the site, and the hope would be that at a future date, that maybe both those property owners just want to take that and split it down the middle, or maybe one of them wants the whole thing, and it can be transferred.
They would have to buy it from the homeowners association, or something.
Or somebody, yeah.
However, that was.
From the developer, depending.
But they, they might never buy it either.
They may never buy it, correct.
And the developer might just decide to deed it to one of them, I mean, or the homeowners association, or somebody down the line, I'm just concerned about leaving something like that there perpetually.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's there right now, and it will be there perpetually, so the goal is, is that hopefully one day, you know, soon, rather than later, that a property owner steps up and just says, hey, I'll, I'll take that, and, and they can transfer it over to them.
Okay, so in this type of, so, in this type of development, let's assume that we go ahead and, and the developer builds it, and it's a couple of years from now, and the houses are occupied, and a, and a homeowner comes and says, hey, I want a variance so I can put a shed in my backyard or something, does this type of development prevent somebody from ever coming back and asking for something beyond what's in the development, like another garage?
You'd also have to go through their HOA, so if you're a buy a lot here.
Okay, so the HOA could establish a rule that says, no, no other buildings on the...
They could say that, whatever's in those.
Right, okay, yes.
But they would go to them typically first, and then they get their approval, and then come in for a zoning certificate.
Okay, so that would be governed internally with their HOA.
As well as us.
So, and then down the road, the only thing that township would maintain would be the pavement between the curbs, and the sidewalks would be the responsibility of the homeowners to maintain them, so ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, when a couple of blocks need to be replaced, that would be on the HOA to maintain.
You are correct, so sidewalk would be either HOA or property owner, and then the pavement would be, the street pavement would be the township.
Yeah, and the other thing I wrote down, and then it came up later, so to be clear, the HOA would maintain the drainage system and the ponds, and that's something that wouldn't fall to the township.
Correct.
And they're under, are they under, so what if they don't maintain it, I guess that's just a problem.
I think that typically would go to the Hamilton County Engineers, and they'd come out, and then they'd investigate the.
If there became a problem with it, okay.
Then you would go in and do that, yeah.
Okay, I think, I think that's all the questions I had right now, thank you.
Hearing no other questions, Mike, if you wanted to grab that sheet real quick, and then we could start, start the public hearing process.
Thank you, Mike, for a full report, as Bill Cunningham always says.
They're gonna let folks come in, I think. Whatever your pleasure is, Raj.
Your presentation.
You want to go ahead and do your presentation? First, let's hear the public hearing.
I think swearing that in as part of the public hearing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can they come in or not? Can we waive our rules and let them in?
I, I don't think we should, because I'm in a perpetual discussion with people who want to open this up, and it, it really, when I say no, and then, yeah.
That's fine, just ask them.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let's, how long your presentation will be?
Sure, bring it.
Okay, let's go ahead, come, do the presentation. At least the people waiting there, they get to see your presentation also.
They may.
They will have opportunity.
Yeah.
About ten minutes, okay?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, come on. Introduce your name, please, for the record, when you come up.
Give me one second.
Oh, okay.
Evening, Brad Austin with MI Homes, ninety-three forty-nine Waterstone Boulevard, Cincinnati, Ohio.
And Brad, would you, would you raise your right hand, Brad?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Mike, that's a very thorough job, and I appreciate the recommendations, and we agree with them, the findings. Real quick, we're glad to be back before you, I think we're gonna be able to answer a lot of questions that were somewhat up in the air last time, last year, we were in here, and with, we're working with staff, and we've got some real good answers to some of the previous concerns regarding traffic and sidewalk and these types of things, so those will be my presentation. Just a reminder for you and the audience who we are, MI Homes, we were founded in nineteen-seventy-six, by the Schottenstein family, we are publicly traded builder on the New York Stock Exchange, we do operate in fifteen different major city markets, and we have been around for about forty-five years now. The track record allows us to offer really the best warranty in the business, we really like to try to stand behind a product, and you'll even notice up there, we offer a fifteen-year structural warranty, but that is also transferable, so it runs with the house, not ownership, so if you sell your house, and there's an issue, we'll back that house for fifteen years. We do have twenty-one active communities between here and South Dayton, and then you'll see Abbey Town down there on the lower left-hand corner in red, and with your approval, we'd like to add that to our community list. Mike showed the colored green spa, or colored green plan, and you, again, you'll notice all the buffering we've provided for Flams and Mrs. R. on the left-hand side or western side. We did show those detention basins as wet, we're gonna make those dry, which will add capacity and help the downstream flooding as best we can, oversize them and add, you know, there won't be water in them, they'll be empty during a storm event, so that'll help with volume, help with flow, and also, Mr. Flam was worried about if the dam breaks, well, now these won't really hold water, I mean, there'll be a storm event, and that water will be released slowly into the creek that flows in between the two. You also notice our entry monument up there, we think, a nice presence as you enter into the community on the left-hand side. Again, pointing out the amount of green space here, twenty-nine percent green space, so we, again, Mike said, we're really working with the topo here, trying to save the natural features, trying to preserve the creeks, and really work with what the land's giving us here. So, a technical landscape plan, but you'll see the amount of plantings there on the western edge, we really got them stacked in there, probably a nice buffer, as well as a Kentucky wooden board fence for those folks as well, which would be a nice feature, and also provide some privacy. I do want to point out, and you'll see in that clouded area, as you come around the corner, you guys, if you can see that cloud in between those two lots, one of the recommendations from your zoning commission was for amenity on the site, and one of the recommendations is a playground, and we have added a playground to it. I'll show you a picture of the equipment at the end, it's about a forty thousand dollar playground, so pretty nice, we just built one up in Mason, and it's very similar to that, and so that was one of the, I think the only condition, planning commission they wanted to see, so we've added a playground, which we think is a good suggestion, and it's central, and everybody can walk and get to it. Sales pricing, you know, our pricing, again, is gonna be between three hundred and twenty-five thousand and four hundred thousand dollars, our homes. What does that mean in the general context of the other homes in the area? Upper left-hand corner, that's Hunterston, and resales there, been running about two fifty-seven. Right above us to the north, resales in there, about a hundred and forty-four thousand. Over to the east, resales there, been running about a hundred and forty-nine thousand, and then down the lower right-hand corner, those homes in that subdivision, been running about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So all in all, our three hundred-plus homes are really gonna help support, if not lift, property values in the area. We are offering ten-floor plans, ten-house plans, but there's also forty elevations in total, so what we really like to do is really mix up our streetscape, so it doesn't look anything cookie-cut, it's a very customized look. We don't allow the same house to be built next to each other, or across the street, so we'd like a lot of variety and a really nice, unique streetscape. Little clarification on the sidewalk and what our application shows, few slides here, in the double yellow through the community, you'll see sidewalk on both sides of the street, and then to, heading west to the left, you'll see a dash line, that's proposed to be built by the township, working with those property owners down to Hunterston, and then we'll go out the back, and we'll touch the fire department, you guys own that, in the dash line, we'll go along the back of the fire station, works with the grade there, and then come out onto Kemper Road, and I think staff and, and plans to even go further onto Tippin, and complete kind of that sidewalk network up there by Kemper and Pippin. So again, we're asking for the sidewalk waiver, because you see in that lower left-hand corner, that mound or mountain, the very top of that is actually where Kemper is, you see our houses sit below there, and you just see the steepness of that grade, that's that line going down to the house, and so, it's just really not a safe situation up there for the topography reasons and the speed of the cars, and that's why the solution, working with staff, was, hey, let's get people, you know, in this section, in through our community, and then back out where they can walk more safely. And so that's really where speed picks up through there as well, so when they pop out by the fire station, we believe the cars will be coming slower from the intersection of Pippin and Kemper, before they start hitting the crest of the hill and coming down through this section. So we think it's a safer alternative and better sidewalk connectivity solution. One of the things, this will show kind of the off-site sidewalk, again, we are, the red dash line up there is at the entrance to our community, and so the red dash line takes it down to Hunterston, and then the lower picture, it'll show where we come down our last lot, we touched the fire department, fire station property, and the township would run in the red dash line out there and out to Kemper Road. So the way the math works is, for the sidewalk waiver, we're gonna write a check for seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's our check to the township. When we estimate the off-site sidewalk, the top, one to Hunterston and the one path to the fire station, at ten dollars a square foot, that'll run about, it would run us about forty-one thousand dollars. So there's still, after the township runs those two legs of sidewalk off-site, there'll still be another thirty-five thousand dollars or so to even further extend the sidewalk system, the township choose to, from the fire station up to the intersection of Kemper Road, so a lot of money there to do off-site improvements, and I think that, again, mentioned, Jeff mentioned, it's part of the, the plan of Colrain Township to kind of connect this area together, so that check will help facilitate the off-site work. This is really just showing all the different development oversight we have, of course, we're before you, zoning commission for zoning and the trustees, but there's a lot of other agencies that look over our plans and what we do. Hamilton County Engineers Office for the road, you know, Kemper Road, and our road improvements internal to the site, Public Works oversees stormwater, Metropolitan Sewer obviously for sewer, OEP A and Army Corps oversee erosion control, make sure we take care of that properly, and water quality, Duke Energy obviously for utilities, and then Hamilton County Building Inspections, they will oversee the actual house construction and building permits and inspection. Last time, they mentioned some flooding, and this is the Flam property that sits directly kind of behind or west of our detention basins, and you see them flooding down there, and that's down by the creek, and I guess in heavy rainfalls, this is a two-inch rainfall, which is pretty significant, they do have standing water in the lower yard, I don't believe they have any flooding, any coming anywhere close to their house, that's not what this is about, this is inconvenience, a little bit of flooding there that is in lower area, and I guess it comes over the driveway where they have storm pipes. So I contacted, actually, Dan Unger, set up a meeting with me and Mr. Flam, decided to figure out what is going on with their storm system. And so, with Mr. Flam's permission, and he contacted his neighbors, we hired our engineer to go out and walk their whole storm system all the way down to Hunterston subdivision. And it's pretty revealing that really their storm system's not functioning because it's not being maintained. Their storm system belongs to these residents, just like ours will belong to our residents, and it's just not being maintained, and I've got some pictures here to really reveal what's going on. I will mention that, that, before I show you the other pictures, OEP A is in charge of water quality, and Hamilton County is in charge of the water quantity, and we have sent our preliminary plans into Mohammed, who runs the, he's an engineer with the Hamilton County, over, his office oversees all stormwater, and I know we got on a conference call with Raj, and Raj had questions for Mohammed too, I, I hope they all got answered. But here's the response from Mohammed in writing, that they reviewed this area, exhibit thirty-three, and the drainage area map for the project, the preliminary detention calculation for the project follow the Hamilton County stormwater regulations, they follow the storm regulations. The final review of detention pond size, location, and storm sewer will be finalized once all stormwater calculations and improvement plans are submitted. So after our zoning, we'll actually draw technical drawings on the stormwaters, and those, like the road design, the storm design, that, all of that is a separate process that gets reviewed by the different county agencies. And so, finally, if you look at the last bullet point there, there is no chapter in the Colrain Township zoning resolution regulating stormwater management, meaning it's not a zoning matter which you're weighing on today, stormwater is regulated by the Hamilton County Engineers Office, and so I want to point that as a point of clarification.
Let me start, I want to confirm this, so, this situation, you probably saw that variations from, keep forgetting, so, when you have, there's a two-inch rainfall, that flooding happened, the pictures you showed, okay, so, if this situation happens again like that, you got the two ponds, the retention ponds, is gonna overflow, adding to that storm situation, that flooding situation there?
So what's going on now, is that creek that runs between Flam right now and Air, this whole site already drains there, it's already draining there today, and so the purpose of the detention basin is now you capture the water, those fill up, you hold back the water, and then that is slowly released over a forty-eight-hour period, and so it actually helped the situation by holding back the stormwater. Additionally, the regulations do not allow, the design of that cannot allow any more release, any faster or volume release than it currently happening, so it has to make the situation better, and that's what Mohammed's office will review. And then once we build them, they, what they call ASBILT, will make us, have our survey come out, make sure all the grades and the outlet pipes are all in the right location, and they'll also make us post a bond, and so that, make sure it functions over time, so.
So, if there's no, there's nobody, at the current situation, that the site should stop the hill, above the hill, currently that adds to that, the flooding problem, the water comes down, go, go down to the little, the drainage pipe, actually, the drainage pipe they have is not capable to pump the pass of the waters, that's why the flooding happening.
Right, so the water's always gone there, before those houses were there, before the pipes were there, before the.
So this subdivision could prevent much of the flooding going down.
We can help it the best we can. We can help it the best we can, but I think what you'll show, I'll show you here is, one of the problems is they're not maintaining their system. I mean, the pipes are clogged. So the water cannot get through there because they've limited the capacity. And so I don't know if they're sized right or not, that's another thing. If they didn't size them properly, they've caused their own problem. But I think you'll see in the pictures, they go a long way to helping themselves if they maintain the system. So let me get through those, because visually you'll see why it's not functioning. Is that helpful?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So what's going on here is you see in blue, again, those are not going to be wet, they're going to be dry. Those are our two detention basins. You see the blue area, and you see Flam and Paul Air. That's where the water will discharge from, we're going to hold the water back in the detention ponds. It'll be slowly released into the existing creek that is split by Flam and Air. And so it goes and it hits, you see the long driveway that goes by Gloria Air's house, Flam, and then back to Paul Air's house. That driveway's got a pipe, I'll show you a picture of it in a minute. And then it goes through that pipe, and then over land, and then the second driveway you see serving Moat and Jeff Air. There's another pipe there, and then it comes through there, and then ultimately goes down to where you see Hunterston Detention Pond. So that's the storm route. That's where the water's going today. And then I'll show you what these pipe systems look like. So we sent our engineer out there to walk the system, understand what was going on. And pretty revealing what's happening. So this is the first point, this is the first pipe in the upper left-hand corner. So the water's coming, you know, through the creek and hitting that first driveway. This is the first pipe underneath the driveway. And you can see the water is halfway up on the pipe, which means that down, on the other discharge part of the pipe, the elevation of the creek is too high. It's backing water up in the pipe. And this was taken on January 7th, and there was no rain event prior to this. So this is a condition you'll see without a rain event of any significant size. In fact, the rain event was .02 inches, or 2 one-hundredths of an inch, that's less than a quarter inch. And that happened two days before the engineer walked it. But you can see the water is currently clogging the pipes, so the pipes don't have the capacity that it designed for, because they're clogged. Additionally, you'll see the stream's got all kinds of vegetation, which is also honeysuckle and so forth, restricting water flow. And that's the upstream first inlet pipe. Now, you go on the other side of the driveway, on the outlet. This is, that's his driveway, the concrete, right? So that's the outlet pipe, and you can see the water's more than halfway up, which means it's all silted out downstream. So that when water's trying to get through there, it's meeting resistance. So that flooding you see in his yard, the water can't get through. And so if they would just reestablish these ditches and let the water flow, it would greatly help their situation. So then it gets worse. You go to the next pipe, this is the next inlet of the next driveway. That's the inlet. You can't even see the pipe. All those sticks and debris and leaves, the water can't get in there. So that's backing water up before it even has a chance to flow. They have to maintain their system, otherwise it's not going to flow, and they're going to have flooding problems. And that is their responsibility. It's not the township's responsibility, it's not the county's responsibility, it's the property owner's responsibility. Now here's the discharge pipe on the other side of the driveway. And again, you can see the problem. The pipe is already more than half-full. So when water wants to come through there, it's meeting resistance, because the grade is downstream of this pipe is higher. It's supposed to be lower, so that all the water can come through the pipe and hit the channel. And so, again, they've got to fix their own situation. So that's what's really going on with the system. And then this is before Hunterston. This is, this is a flow channel that's going into a window. There's a basketball stuck in there. But this is a four-sided culvert, meaning the water's supposed to come in all four sides. You can see, you can't see the windows on the other sides, because the soil is up against them. So they're not flowing, it's not flowing from four sides. Again, they need to clean that out, so the water can go where it's supposed to go, by design. So punchline is that basically their storm system, they need to properly maintain it. And that would go a long way to helping their flooding problems. Any questions on that? Because I know storm power's been a big concern. Again, this is showing, Mr. Flam also asked for more trees and the fence. And these yellow ones are the additional trees. We try to pack in there best we can for him since the last hearing. So we're trying to accommodate him or buffering situation as best we can, including Mrs. Air. Again, we think that the street zoning's on the lower right-hand box. You know, Mr. Flam seems some resistance to this development, but the reality is the straight zoning would be backing houses straight up to his property. Under the PED design, you'll see we largely have open space behind him and install the buffer. He really doesn't have any houses directly facing him. So the PED creativity and flexibility actually, we think, improved his situation over what could have been done under street zoning. Additionally, Mr. Flam, Mrs. Flam, back in 2006, they actually provided a sewer easement through their property that comes to the Abbey Town subdivision. So they're well of the previous subdivision that was approved, the Slonaker one. In fact, and they actually helped facilitate the development of the property. So it should be no surprise, because they gave the sewer easement to serve the Abbey Town development. So they were party to further development of the property. This is for some property owners in our back, and we can bring up the panhandle situation now. So Mr. Smith up in the upper left-hand corner there, he first contacted me. And then, no, Mr. Girth, rather. He's the upper left-hand corner, and then he's got a neighbor, Mr. Smith, as you go to the right. And then a Mr. Sweet, Mr. and Mrs. Sweet on next to that. And Smith and Sweet share this panhandle. And Mr. Girth, I guess, had talked to his neighbors and said, hey, you know, can we get a fence? And he sent me this specification. And the fence would run from the creek, past Paul Air's house, past Girth's house, and then go down the rear property line, the north property line of our property, and go past Smith and go past Sweet. Now, the panhandle, I've offered that half to Mr. Smith and after Mr. Sweet. And essentially, they have an agreement in front of them yet to be signed that gives them half of that, agrees that we'll put in the fence, and they'll go ahead and adjust their septic easements, so they're not, so they're draining in the right places. So those real estate, and they would, then we would transfer that at no cost to them. And so they have a real estate agreement in front of them to assign that speaks to all this. The fence, the easements, and then donating the property. So that's how we're handling that. The traffic study. So we, since last time, we went ahead and did a formal traffic study and submitted to the Engineers Office. Essentially, their finding is that the traffic has been approved. The location where we have it is approved and proper. The site distance is good there, and they've recommended no further improvements on Kemper Road. And so they essentially have approved our traffic study and are fine with the design that's currently submitted. Here's the playground structure that we just put in, and we're going to propose the same thing here. So pretty good idea by Planning Commission, quite frankly. We like the central location of it, and will be kind of a gathering place for the families. So we did, I told you a lot of things have changed in terms of we tried to address previous concerns. These are the concerns we addressed of the neighbors. We do have a decorative fence and significant tree buffering along the Air and the Flam property. We do have proposed this perimeter field fence along Air, Girth, Smith, and Sweet, and donating the land to them as well. Stormwater management plans have been approved by the county engineer. The Flam, Air, and Moats, we're offering this. If they, we showed you all those problems, we're not maintaining it. But if they want to do actually improvements, we're volunteering to participate in that. In other words, we'll contribute 50% of the cost, up to $10,000. If they want to upsize pipe, or, you know, redefine ditches, whatever they want to do, we're voluntarily offering to participate in that at 50% level. Because we want to see it work well. We don't want neighbors with flooding problems. And our water's going there too, so whatever we can do to make the situation better. I don't know that they'll ever have an exact solution. I don't know if they size their pipes right. But we're willing to contribute into that, up to $10,000, at 50% of the improvements. And that can go a long way. I mean, if they want to spend $10,000 of their own money, $20,000 total, you can, it could certainly make their situation better. Additionally, we are asking for the off-site waiver, and our contribution to that would be $75,000. That's $75,000 again. About $40,000 to make the off-site improvements to Hunterston, and then through the firehouse up to Pippin, or up to Kemper. And then, of course, there's another $35,000 to spend going from Kemper all the way up to the intersection of Pippin and Kemper. So that should go a long way to make that whole sidewalk solution work for you folks. Again, Kemper Road traffic study has been approved. And per Planning Commission's recommendation, we have added the playground structure and playground area. So we feel like we've addressed a lot of the previous concerns. And again, another look at the green space plan. And you can see in the tan little box in there between those two lots, that's where that playground's going to sit. So that's our proposal. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's very good. At least you made some modifications than the previously proposed.
Definitely.
Any questions?
Mike answered my questions earlier. That's, I think I had my questions addressed.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for the presentation and for the rework of, rework of the, some of the issues that the neighbors had, and some of the issues that we had up here too. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I move this over? Is that your computer? All right, good evening. My name is Kathy Hunter. That's Kathy with a C. I live at 3220 West Kemper Road.
Kathy, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I come as a Corrin Township resident with some major concerns. Abbey Town's, this whole subdivision plan started over a year or so ago. And at the last zoning meeting, I want to address some things that came up, some comments that were made. I know, I was born here in Corrin Township. I went to school in Corrin Township. I was married in Corrin Township, raised my family in Corrin Township. So I have seen the township through my 70 years. My husband's family, who owned Hunter, the Hunter Farm, which is now Hunterston, they go back to John Cleve Sims. So I come as a resident that I hope will be heard. I know that when there's money involved, there's not always listening to the voices of residents. So I would like to address some of the things that were said. I will start with, Mr. Iona had mentioned at the zoning that the comprehension plan was a guiding, had guiding language. And at the initial meeting, he had turned to our group and said, well, if I've done the, this was before, I'm sorry, back in November, I think of '19. He said, if I've done this wrong, I'm sorry. Well, yes, because he's not really listening to the people of the community. I moved out to Pleasant Run, Dunlap area, in 2016 after my mother-in-law passed away. And she was the last donor of Hunter property. And I grew up, I grew up on Gabber Throat, and I grew up on Hanley Road. So I have seen a big change in the township. The township has become very in-depth, lot of houses. And there is a rural character to the West Kemper area. I know they've talked about the, that there's churches, there's other developments. Those developments where this property is going to be near were from the '70s and the '80s. I mean, when I was a kid at Corrin High School, we used to, I had friends that lived back in those subdivisions. But I'm not sure that people have driven west on Kemper. So what I've brought for the trustees, and I'm not sure they have. The first pictures are of this intersection that everybody keeps talking about at Pippin and West Kemper. It is not a safe intersection. The kids, I see kids walking, students walking from Pleasant Run Junior High in front of the houses to the corner, and then there is a crosswalk over toward Pleasant Run Church. There is no crosswalk from there to the corner house on Kemper, nor is there one from Pippin, crossing over Pippin to the cemetery, in front of the cemetery, which also used to be a farm. I built a float there when I was in high school. So that property, if you look at it, it's still not safe. It's not a safe area. And one of the pictures, the first three pictures they gave you is that intersection and looking down Kemper Road. My husband and I live farther down, or the first house, basically, of the Hunterston homehomes. So when I come down that road, I'm down quite a bit, and I still put my signal on ahead of time towards the Ayers and the Moats, because I'm always afraid I'm going to get rear-ended from somebody flying down West Kemper. And that's a concern. There are going to be families living in that house, in those homes. And one of the things that there was talk about was this money. And my home's just throwing money around, which is fine. They have that kind of money to do that. But it becomes a township issue, because that sidewalks are really sidewalks to nowhere. And of course, as you walk across the property, as you go up Kemper Road, there's a 50-foot drop. So of course, you can't do a sidewalk there. You come out on the other side of the firehouse, from there to the corner, it's not safe, because it's still a huge intersection, and people are coming and going, and they're still not slowing down. So that is a concern. Now, I'm glad Mr. Austin cleared something up. It really bothered me in the zoning meeting. It came up about not having green space. And he said, well, the kids can play in the woods, or people can walk their dogs in the woods. Well, as a parent and a grandparent, that bothered me. You're going to send kids out in the woods to play? So I'm glad that at least in their preliminary plan, they've added a playground. And in respect to that, when Hunterston was developed, my father-in-law was close to 80. He really wanted to give the land to Hamilton County Parks. But Mr. Pottinger down the street had already done that, and so Hamilton County said they didn't want any more land. And he was at a position where my husband was not going to be a farmer. He's an engineer, and his sister certainly wasn't going to. He's an engineer, and his sister certainly wasn't going to farm. But the trustees took the concerns of the citizens and they want, the Dries built that subdivision. They wanted 286 houses. They only allowed them 186 houses. And some of those pictures, I took some pictures just near my house. The houses are nice homes. There's nice yards. We have, there's a walkway through there. It has blacktop on it. There's a play area for the kids. Everybody has a lot of space. And that was before there was this comprehension plan that Mr., you know, Iona had said was just guiding language. And it was interesting because one of the things that came up were cul-de-sacs. And at the zoning meeting two weeks ago, when the different departments were making their presentations, the Public Works Director, Jackie O'Connell, was talking about clearing the snow during our snow. And Corrine Township's always had an excellent fire department and we've always had good public works. And she commented on the difficulty of cul-de-sacs. Well, this property with these crammed-in houses, 68 houses and 28 acres, and the land is not really good, the green space is what's unusable. And I find it interesting that you can probably reach your hand out your window to the window next door and get a cup of sugar because they'll be so close. And MI Homes, I know, just bought 50, 51.9 acres out in Green Township, and they're putting 67 homes on 51.9 acres. So I guess Green Township has a different standing than Corrine Township. I don't know. So one of the big issues is the density. That many houses, and it is a rural, and some of the pictures I showed you are the rural character. Mr. Tepey said it's not really a rural character. And of course, the definition of rural is characteristics of countryside rather than a town. And if you look at those pictures, I, somewhere in the rain, it was raining, and I was trying to take some pictures to see. It is rural, and people have spent money. And if you look at some of the homes, people have put their life savings into some of these homes out there to have this rural feel. And when you drive into Corrine now, down Corrine Avenue is so crammed with a lot of stuff and a lot of cars, and it's not getting any better. So one of the things that Mr. Tepey talked about was, you know, on this, at the zoning meeting, that there was no experts. Well, I'm not an expert on Corrine Township, but I am a township resident, and I have been, I've read through on different Corrine sites. And my voice is not the only voice that is concerned that we are not being heard. And, you know, the reputation of Corrine Township is we have rumkey. And I know, I know where two of the trustees live, and I know they don't live by rumkey. And fortunately, it doesn't come our way. But when you drive there, sometimes I sneeze the whole way down from all the smell and the garbage, which is, we know, a whole problem. So I just feel like the how, if they want to build houses, fine, but it needs to be less dense. Why, they can't keep the character. If you go west on Kemper, that would be keeping the character of the homes, not looking at the houses east of that, which were built in the 70s and 80s. So that is my biggest concern is that Corrine Township residents need to be heard. And it looks good on paper, but it's going to be crammed. I know our fire department will take care of anything because they always do. But the character of that neighborhood doesn't need to look, you know, Corrine Township is running out of green space altogether. And, you know, people are moved, who stay in Corrine Township, who have this connection to Corrine Township, do that for a reason. Then they came out to get the land. So those are some of the comments that I felt needed to be addressed, that I was really, really upset watching the zoning meeting and just pretty much the cavalier attitude that the township and the concerns were not being heard. And yes, if they, you know, if people will take the money. I know MI Homes has offered money to different residents to solve some of the problems that the residents have expressed. And I guess you can throw money at anything, but they're not going to go away. And even $75,000 isn't going to replace a life if somebody's killed walking on Kemper. We have two neighbors in the neighborhood who every Sunday, they walk up Kemper Road picking up garbage. And they're two grown men, and they talk about it, that it's, you know, they have to stay over so they don't have to worry about getting hit from cars going down. So the, and Yorkies across the street, they have all that huge land that had been their father's farm. And the speed limit is 50, so the cars go, go fast. And I think we have to look at the big picture, not just this little picture of, oh yeah, we'll throw in some money here, we'll throw in money there, oh, we'll stick in a little sidewalk here. That's going to solve everybody's problems. And I don't think it will. Put in some nice homes that are similar to the homes that are already out on West Kemper. And maybe some of our residents, and I know people, friends, they're moving out of the township. You know, they're tired of it. They're tired of the reputation we're getting. And, you know, Mount Airy is encroaching on Corrine Township. That's an older area. And of course, as I said, I grew up on Hanley Road, which has now, you know, part of the road had been moved. White Oak Center is part of my back, what was my backyard. But I think it's, I think it's bad to go with that many houses in that space and be realistic, to keep Corrine Township's up instead of pulling it down and becoming just overcrowded. And so those are my, my concerns. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate coming to the hearing. Oh, next on the list, Mr. Calvin Hunter.
Sir, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name's Calvin Hunter. I live at 3220 West Kemper.
And could you also raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, you've heard from the boss and our family, but I have a few more notes, and I also have a little handout for the trustees, just to give you a better picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say thank you for the opportunity to again, present to you guys our feelings of myself and, and many of our neighbors. Just a question of the trustees, do you guys get to hear and listen to the zoning commission hearings?
I, I intentionally do not so that I don't have a bias coming into the public hearing. I don't know about the other two.
No, I don't.
I do not, but I rely on Mike to make reports to us.
Okay.
The zoning director.
Okay. It's just, there was a great summary by Sean Callahan as to the, the previous zoning hearing and denial back in, I believe it was November 2019. And really, there's not a lot that's changed in the proposals. They've, let me just get into a couple of quick points here, and I'll just summarize. The sewer connection, oops, hang on a minute. This is first point on my summary. Water flooding and management. Regardless of MI Homes offering to provide monetary assistance to several homeowners adjacent to the west side of the proposed development, the flooding will continue downstream, notwithstanding new culverts or, or driveway amendments. The watershed from the development will be increased by at least 30 to 50% due to the density of the housing, streets, and runoff from existing steep slopes. And as most people agree, the weather severity seems to be increasing. And if you go to the first attachment or handout, this is from the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan, page six. And I've blown up a copy of the actual plan. There's a lot of red and some blue. At the top of the page, you'll see that all this blue area circled by the orange highlight is actually by definition of the Corrine Township planning as flood, special flood hazard area, the floodway and 100-year flood plain, which begins right about Hunterston on Kemper Road. And that feeds into the Crest Creek, the Bank Creek, and the Lick Creek, all go down to the, across the Butler County line and into the Great Miami River. So it is in fact designated by some authority, and I presume either the National Weather Service or some other authority, that's included in the comprehensive plan of Corrine Township. The land use, the next discussion that I'd like to mention is the character areas. The next handout has basically page 18, which is a little land use framework map. And the framework use states that the boundaries are intended not to be site-specific. The following pages define policies for each of the framework categories. And to me, the term intentionally not site-specific means that they might be fluid or move or perhaps be not exact. So the point is that the little orange box around the green to, to yellow area on that page 18 in the, in the comprehensive plan book is inclusive of the flow of the land from Pippin Road West. So that would seem to still be part of the rural area. And the other question is, in their description, what does policy actually mean? Apparently, the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan Committee back in 2005 and the trustees meant it to be a strict guideline. Reading the definition of the rural areas, at the bottom of page 18, it says wooded hillsides and large lot residential uses are the main characteristic of Corrine Township's rural areas. Wooded hillsides dominate the landscape and have historically discouraged development in the past, preserving this character until recent, until recent years when engineering improvements have led to the clearing of land and stripping of hillsides to allow for larger-scale development. In addition to the natural constraints of hillsides and flood plains, the current roadway network in the area consists of rural roads with narrow widths in some areas, steep slopes, and winding courses that are not designed or maintained to accommodate the suburban density development, et cetera. And then it does go on to give the requirements for, on page 19, I'm not going to read any of that. But anyway, the same map is used from, as on page 18, is on page 26, which gets into more of the character of rural Corrine Township. Keep in mind, the intent of the land use plan are intentionally not site-specific. So the selection highlighted in orange, again, up toward Pippin Road, is still part of the rural character area to the rural north Dunlap area. And in this description, it says the vision for the rural areas is this area will continue to have a rural character with wooded hillsides, minimum development, and the preservation of the natural elements found within Corrine Township. The area will provide opportunity for large lot residential uses and rural living. Hillsides will be preserved as a natural state as possible to prevent the potential of landslide and stormwater runoff problems. The Great Miami River will also be preserved as a natural state, in as natural state as possible. And then it goes on to list development policies. So next point would be zoning. As you know, from the staff report, the acreage of residences adjacent to the property, to the proposed development to the east and the west are from 1.65 acres to 8.6 acres. Five-acre residents to the north, 10 to 15-acre homes to the south across Kemper. These families chose Corrine Township to invest in and build their homes in rural Kemper Road Dunlap area to enjoy nature and tranquility, not to be staring at homes that are 10 feet apart and that are not in the character of the existing community. The area is definitely a mature area with the newest homes built around 1998 to 2001 in Hunterston. Originally, Dries proposed 285 homes with a PD on about 95 acres. The neighborhood residents protested the R6 PD at the township meetings to protect their rural farming community from overrun with high-density housing. The township, the neighbors, and Dries finally agreed to keep within the R4 planned development zoning with 185 homes in Hunterston Development. That's approximately a 30% reduction in the number of homes. As a result, the Hunterston homes have a minimum of .3 acres, up to 1.2 acres, with an average of .5 acres, or 19,602 square feet on the lots. That's the average. The lot sizes have been taken from the Hamilton County Auditor's online property access site. Compared to the proposed 7,800 foot to 18,000 square foot average, an average of 10,000 square foot proposed development with no amenities, unless you consider sidewalks and steep wooded, unbuildable areas for the kids to go play in. Hunterston will exceed the 14,000 square foot R4 requirement, or Hunterston well exceeds the 1,400 square foot requirement and maintains the character of rural Kemper Dunlap area. Wide lots, green space, walking paths, a lake with fish and ducks and geese, and a playground. All the attributes of the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan, even before the plan was implemented in 2005. This is 20, or 1998, when Hunterston was developed. In conclusion, let me read from the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan conclusion on page 76. Says, "A long-term success of the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan rests largely in the techniques and programs selected by the community to implement the plan. A plan without a strategy for implementation or action by the township provides little direction for improving the community needs. However, another vital element of the comprehensive plan and its development is the people, the residents, businesses, and property owners of Corrine Township who chose to be here and who elect officials to represent them. These people attend meetings and volunteer their time." These people attend meetings and volunteer their time so that a plan such as this is a representative of the greater community and not just a single interest. It is important for the future of this plan to such community involvement is included in all levels of planning and the implementation of these recommendations." And this is my closing here. "The Comprehensive Plan was not created by one man or one department, but by the people, the residents, the businesses, and the property owners of Corrine Township. For the citizens of Corrine Township who have voiced their wishes and opinions over the last year about this project, many whose voices have now been silenced for deals for monetary payment or perimeter fencing, et cetera. The concerns for highway safety, sidewalks, and children dumped out on Kemper Road at the top of the hill, flooding downstream, housing density, sewer capacity, all are still there. Only superficial Band-Aids and buy-offs have been offered. The issue is still housing density to maintain the R4 zoning requirement. If MI Homes would care to come back with a plan that would decrease the number of homes and increase the actual lot size to adhere to the current R4 rural characteristic of West Kemper, I believe there would be little opposition to the plan. The proposed zoning amendment, ZA 2021-01, seems to have a single interest, not the interest of the citizens expressed in the last year and a half, to keep the character area rural and keeping the zoning rural. Mr. Brad Austin has one single interest, that's building as many homes of high density to maximize profits for MI Homes. He has no vested interest in the history or preserving the character of rural northern Corrine Township. Mr. Tepe, the lawyer, is a hired gun, paid to do anything possible to assure his client gets what they want. He has no residence or stake in rural Corrine Township. Mr. Iona seems to have a single interest in getting this project approved without concern for the residents or regard for the preserving of what little rural character area remains in the township. It has been with the townships, he's been with the township approximately two years, and I believe he is doing a good job overall. However, I suspect, suspect that million-dollar projects will look good on his resume. Remember, zoning commission, the zoning commission denied the same basic proposal on November nineteenth, 2019. Basically, nothing has changed. The issues are the same. The residents of rural Corrine, rural Kemper have committed their resources and faith in Corrine Township to maintain the level of quality and character of this community and not to lower the zoning standards." That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunter, for coming and talking in the hearing.
Your name is Calvin Hunter? And the other subdivision, was that your land at one point?
It was my dad's and my grandfather's.
Okay.
I never owned it. My dad had to sell it, basically, because farmers don't have a big pension.
Right.
And he needed, you know, for their security and their aging. By the way, I'm not the farmer. I'm an electrical engineer by education and worked in temperature control industry around the township and around the county. So.
Okay, thank you.
That was a reference to me from, I think, Mr. whatever the, during the zoning committee. Anyway, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
May I get a question?
Nope.
How many?
You got one more, I think. Wait a minute, Kevin. James Castle?
That's me. So, I'm generally asking about Tom Tepe. He had a confidence, he's also a campaigner. So, I have never called him out.
Okay, good. See, all right, I take the name off.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Kevin Gerth. I live at thirty-one forty West Kemper Road.
Kevin, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, the first thing I just wanted to bring up that was a concern of mine and something that, you know, I'm observing is the sidewalk that's going to be going across my property. My property is on the most northwestern side of the proposed development. So, my driveway comes out in between Hunterston, where Abbey Town's going to be, and the sidewalk that has now come about going from Hunterston up to Abbey Town would be crossing our driveways. So, the first thing that came out or jumped in my mind when I heard about that was, okay, where at in Corrine Township do we have sidewalks on fifty mile-per-hour roads? So, as I'm coming down a fifty mile-per-hour road, and I'm turning my turn signal on, and everybody knows, has talked about how the traffic's always barreling down on the back of you, you gotta have your turn signal on early. You want to slow down, you know, you want to give yourself time because you don't want to get rear-ended. So, now that we want to put a sidewalk going across my driveway, now I'm not only trying to get off a fifty mile-per-hour road, but now I'm having to keep my eye out for people or kids, people riding bikes, people walking up and down the sidewalk. It doesn't make sense to me where, back in 2019, we're talking about how there's no room further up Kemper Road for a sidewalk, so that's a bad idea to have, you know, people walking up Kemper Road right there. But now we're putting a sidewalk in on Kemper Road going across my driveway. Why do we want to introduce more foot traffic between the two neighborhoods? That doesn't make sense to me one bit. It's not only a safety concern for the people on the sidewalk, but it also is a problem for people like me just trying to turn in their driveway. Like I said, I'm coming down a busy road. I have a trailer, I have a camper, I have neighbors with trailers, you know, we're trying to get off the road. We don't need to stop on Kemper Road because people are walking across the driveway. It's a bad idea. Another thing is, when you come down the road and it's night, you know, it's dark, you can't see anything off either side of the road, there's not a single, you know, light on Kemper Road, you know, you can't see the sides, you know, what's off the side of the road. You come around that corner and all you're thinking is, hey, I'm pulling off the road to come in, you know, I'm going home. I don't want to run over, you know, anybody that might be just walking the sidewalk. It's just a bad idea. So, that's the first sidewalk. The second one, I know, coming up, further up by the firehouse, yeah, we're cutting a little bit of walking distance out, going up Kemper Road for, you know, kids trying to go to school, whatnot. People wanting to get out, walk around, but you're still putting them out on a fifty mile-per-hour road. I don't know if anybody ever pays attention or has been through the intersection of Kemper and Pippin there, but I was going through it the other day and I was, I was like, you know what? What would it be like to walk down this road and, you know, cross the street? And the first thing I noticed was two signs on the west side of Pippin Road. So, when the road changes to that higher speed mile-per-hour, there's two signs on that road on the two poles, and they have two people walking, or it has people walking with lines going through them saying, "Don't cross here." So, we're going to put a sidewalk out, expect people to go down Kemper Road to cross this intersection that's been marked for how many years now that this is a bad idea? And now all of a sudden, what are we going to do? We're just going to take the signs down to make it right? That doesn't make sense to me at all, either. Still a safety concern. So, the only thing I'm really seeing changing from 2019 to where we are now, yeah, we added some sidewalks. One, a real bad idea. The other one, okay, maybe we're getting a little closer, but still a bad idea. We're not fixing anything, you know? It's, it's still a problem, you know? He's offering seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, seven hundred and fifty bucks, but what's that going to do? That's just a dollar amount, you know? If you got this problem, you build this neighborhood that's going to be here for how many years now? It's going to be there for a long time, you know? And you got this problem that's now going to become the township's problem, it's going to become a taxpayer's problem, you know? And heaven forbid anybody that is in an incident or does get hurt, you know, walking up and down those roads. You can't put a price tag on a life. You can't say seventy-five thousand dollar waiver is going to fix your, you know, your problems, you know? He could offer you, you know, five times that amount. And all it is is a dollar amount, but it's not going to fix the problem, you know? It's, it's not going to fix it. So, that's my feelings on the sidewalks. As far as following the Comprehensive Plan, you know, we've heard the arguments, you know, Ken Petrie, his lawyer, he's gone through the whole spiel. You know, I don't, I didn't come here with a presentation, I'm just calling you, calling it out and telling you what I see, how it is. We have this Comprehensive Plan that I'm sure a lot of, you know, residents like myself, taxpayers, you know, we probably paid somebody pretty good money in, you know, in the township to put this Comprehensive Plan together to benefit the residents and the people of the township. I would expect that the Comprehensive Plan, you know, not be taken for granted. I feel like we paid good money to have this put in place, and now, if you're not following the Comprehensive Plan, like, what's the whole point of that, you know? You know, we, the people paid the money, I'm sure somebody got paid pretty good to come up with this plan, and then it was approved as a plan, and now, what's that mean? If you're not following the plan, it's, you might as well just throw that out the window, you know? Why have it? You know, why, why even put it in place? So, as far as everything that follows the Comprehensive Plan, as far as the coal sacks, the density, following the characteristics, as far as the neighborhoods around us, you know, I don't, I can't think of a neighborhood even close to me that has a house that's ten foot apart from each other, you know? Ten foot apart, let's be honest, that's like pouring into your garage, you know? That's ten foot. The houses are pretty dang tight. If this was approved, I would like to see the number of houses kind of, maybe spread them out a little bit more. It's pretty dense, you know? It's real dense. And I don't, I don't know anywhere in my area that, you know, you can take that aerial footage, and I'm sure we got pictures of it here during the presentations of, you know, you know, houses and neighborhoods that are around us, but ten foot apart, I, can anybody tell me where we're at around us? We got, where's the closest neighborhood with houses ten foot apart? So, that didn't really sit well, you know, as far as Comprehensive Plans. For, as far as the flooding and everything like that, you know, that kind of is what it is, you know? You, it's, it's mother nature. You can't predict the big one, all you can do is prepare for it, right? So, I'm sure a lot of other people and, you know, other engineers and stuff like, everybody's got their own say-so on that. But the flood, the flooding's not going to stop, you know? You can put bigger pipes in here and there, but it goes further down, further down the road than Hunterston. I mean, you can follow it all the way to Past Germania and, you know, it's a swamp down there. It's, it's wetlands, you know? It's always a swamp. So, it's not just our driveways that's an issue. It's not Hunterston that's just an issue, it's, it's just the way the land is. So, putting in all these larger houses and stuff, or all the runoff from the roads and stuff like that, it better be well thought out because that, that could be a huge problem, too. So, that's all I got. You guys have any questions?
So, thank you very much for coming. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Don Smith here.
That's this last one.
Is that it? I got to set you up up here now. Hold on. We'll have to hook it in. Okay. And then I'll plug you in.
Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Don Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I live at one-two-zero-eight-zero Birch Hill Drive, which is the property to the northwest of the Abbey Town proposed development.
And Don, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Birch Hill?
B-I-R-C-H.
H-I-L-L. Sometimes it appears two words, sometimes it's one word. Oh, got it, okay, great. Okay. This is my third time speaking on the Abbey Town. The first time I spoke was with the zoning, the trustees here about a year or so ago. And then I spoke at the zoning commission, oh, it's been a month or so ago, and now this is the third time. And what I'd like to do is, I think, I've heard of many of my arguments and many of my points. Is this to the echo in here, is this okay, or can we turn this down any at all? We get a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I don't know if it's closer, but let me take it, myself out of the, I mean, that's better right there.
No, point's at my microphone.
Okay. How's that, that better? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I'll do that. All right. What I'd like to do is, is address a couple of the issues that my peers, my neighbors have addressed, as well as, from the last time at the zoning commission meeting, it was mentioned, well, we didn't hear anybody with any credentials, no SME, no anybody that could talk to the issues. It was just more anecdotal-type evidence, the things that were given by, to the zoning commission. Well, I wanted to maybe dissuade that a little bit. The SME is the, is in the eye of the trustees, but my credentialing is, I have an advanced degree in physics, which is application of understanding natural systems and how they work. I've also been a PMP for two decades, so I deal with management and development of large projects, not only in technological fields and industries, but also just in general, being able to put something together and plan it out well. So, I, I'll leave that with you, whether you can consider me knowledgeable in these areas, we'll go from there. What I'd like to do, this I presented last year, but what I'd like to do is maybe go through this a little bit, and from a, from a overall system
All right. Well, I don't know if it's closer, but let me take it, myself out of the, I mean, that's better right there. Okay. How's that, that better? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I'll do that. All right. What I'd like to do is, is address a couple of the issues that my peers, my neighbors have addressed, as well as from the last time at the zoning commission meeting, it was mentioned, well, we didn't hear anybody with any credentials, no SME, no anybody that could talk to the issues. It was just more anecdotal type evidence of things that were given by, to the zoning commission. Well, I wanted to maybe dissuade that a little bit. The SME is the, is in the eye of the trustees. But my credentialing is, I have an advanced degree in physics, which is application of understanding natural systems and how they work. I've also been a PMP for two decades. So, I deal with management and development of large projects, not only in technological fields and industries, but also just in general, being able to put something together and plan it out well. So, I, I'll leave that with you, whether you can consider me knowledgeable in these areas. We'll go from there. What I'd like to do, this I presented last year, but what I'd like to do is maybe go through this a little bit. And from a, from a overall system perspective, one of the issues that's been, I think, not really fully developed is the stormwater issue. The terrain, as you look at Abbey Town, is sloped. It's, if you look at the contours, there's a slope from the east higher, down to the west lower. And all of that right now, as open ground, absorbs the water that comes onto it. You get just the runoff that you've seen from, that's been presented to the board up to this point. What I'd like to do is talk about what's going to happen with a little bit more water coming down. And now, with the assumption that the development would be approved. And so, you're going to put sixty-eight houses into this thirty acres. And with the two retention ponds that are at the bottom of it, and then with Hunterston down below that. I'd like to maybe walk through that a little bit and see what this actually looks like. So, if you start here, this is the question, is how much runoff water is collected if one, if a half a foot of rain falls in an afternoon? And I put some assumptions down there that there's going to be a hurricane remnant, a large stationary front that, a warm front or cold front slides up against. And you're just going to get lines of thunderstorms that slide up over the area, or you get the remnant of some sort of a tropical disturbance come up over it. The ground is saturated from just rain. And then you dump six inches in an afternoon on top of it. And I'll show where the, the background information comes from in just a minute. My assumptions there, the, historically, the Ohio value has experienced a foot of rain in an hour. And that comes from data from NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration. And I put down a half a foot of rain in an afternoon, an inch an hour from noon till 6:00 PM. It's a representative value. Okay. So, what I did is I just, I took and just did some very basic, you know, calculations of nothing extraordinary. But I looked at this and I said, okay, for the thirty acres, you've got 1.3 million square feet. A lot of square feet. And once you put the, the houses with all of the roofs, the gutters, the downspouts, drains, driveways, streets, and all of the other areas that don't absorb water anymore, there's going to be some amount of water that's going to be runoff into storm drain rather than absorbed into the ground and naturally work down toward the aquifer. Okay? So, I used anywhere from seventy-five to fifty-five percent. And I looked at those, those values and I came up with, if you look at those, what you'll have is those representative values over on the right. That's, the numbers aren't so much important, but they're representative of what I'm trying to say. So, if you look down here at the bottom, what I'm trying to show here is that, and I took it as a football field. I think everyone's familiar with a soccer field or a football field size. And you take and you put for half a foot of water with at the bottom one, if you just look at fifty-five percent of the water hits and runs off instead of soaking in, then you're going to have about, over that thirty acres, seven and a half feet of water that would be sitting on a football field. That's about the amount of water that you would have. For a little higher percentage, you'll get more water. That's, that's representative. Okay? Any, any questions about what I'm trying to explain here or anything? Just saying that all the water in, in the Abbey Town proposed area, as it would runoff, some percentage of it will runoff. And I'm saying that there will be somewhere between, I don't know, seven and a half, ten feet of water. If you had more water come down, then you would have a higher level of water coming in. And this is a football field size of, of amount of water that high. I'm just using that as a, as a comparison model. Okay. What I also, this is the, the data that I looked at for NOAA. And if you can look there where Ohio is, just to the east of where we are at Cambridge and over to the west in Missouri, we have had events that have, where in Cambridge, in a thirty minutes, they had seven inches of rain. And that was back in nineteen fourteen. And then in an hour in Holt, Missouri, they had twelve inches of rain in a one-hour period. Now, I've been, tried to be conservative in that whole piece and just leave it as, there's some event with an inch an hour for six hours that is saturate, on saturated ground, so that that's the runoff. What I added new, this is from my first presentation. I think the board has seen this already. What I wanted to look at is this is a little bit of the, looking at the retention, proposed retention ponds. Now, I noticed in Mr. Austin's presentation that Mohammed Islam, who's the professional engineer, he had stated that, well, once we get approval to do this, we'll determine what the runoff is. Now, I've done his work for him. And what I want to show you is just a little bit of what I think is coming if, if we have a large significant event. If I can direct your attention to the board there. You have, two retention ponds are at the west, are the lower end of the proposed development. These ponds will catch runoff that collects from six inches of rain in the scenario that I described. The general shape of the ponds is a flat inverted cone, which can be represented by, there's a formula there that I did with, that you can read through, where H is the depth of the pond from the rim down to the bottom, and R is a representative radius. These are the values that I took off of the MI's contour maps and their planning maps. And I looked at it, and I've got basically a hundred and thirty thousand cubic feet of water that both of those ponds will hold. Now, if they, if these are retention ponds, then what you will end up with is there's already some water in the bottom of them, so they'll hold a little bit less. But for the overall picture that I'm trying to paint, what I'm trying to show is that, I mean, there's a lot of what-ifs, or maybe it's a little more, little less. This is a representative model that I'm, I put together just to try to show you what it would be. So, if I have, using the first picture of all the water that's collected, at fifty-five percent or about half of the water that's collected, filling a football field-sized rectangle to a depth of seven and a half feet, then these two retention ponds at the bottom would collect about two and three, if they were empty, two and three-quarter feet of water. Okay? And so, I've still got four and a half, four and three-quarters feet of water that's still going to be coming down through there. And there's nothing, I think, you can do from a perspective of managing the water. First of all, because you're on a side of a hill, and the water absorption presently, without the development, is, it goes into the ground, and you still get some runoff as Mr. Hunter and also, Brian Blank, no, my other neighbor just down the hill from me that testified tonight. They also would, they showed that a minimal amount, just with a minimal amount of water. If you put this much water through there, no culvert system, no drainage system is going to be able to handle this. This will overflow, and it will run through properties. The, if you look back at, or think back to, and I'll show a picture of it further out in just a minute. But if you think back to the Hunterston Pond at the bottom, just to the Abbey Town side of that, to the east, I think there's about eight or nine houses, four abreast. And that's going to be the main path of this kind of water coming through there, if there's any kind of event coming through there. This gives you a little bit better graphic, I tried to. Can we rotate this guy? Let's see. I'll just leave it here. If you, in your minds, I can think sideways here for a minute. The blue area is my, the area where I reside. And what you'll see there is this red, up at the top is the fire station. In the upper right corner there, inside the red circle is the fire station. Just to the right of it, up on the hill, is the water tower. And what I've done is I've traced this red line down through the contours. This is what the map shows. I'm very familiar with contours from my military career and dealing with landmass and things. So, this is the collection area where all the water is going to go through. The, the red line that goes through my property then comes down, and it follows along a finger. So, all of the water at the top of inside that circle is going to come down through that funnel. The right side vertical line is Kemper Road. And that is a boundary which the water can't go uphill, but it's going to be coming down through it. And so, at the very bottom now, what you end up with is these houses right at the bottom are the ones that are going to take the brunt of any, any kind of water issue. Now, we've heard testimony from the hunters, as well as from the others that live down in the Hunterston area, that you have just a little bit of water coming through there. And you're going to have, you already have some surface flooding or some surface kind of, of events going on there. Now, inside the yellow from the middle line there that's red, that goes through my property, over to the yellow line on the left side, all of that now is, is not absorption. There's some of it that is. But you also have, inside that yellow-red boundary is the water. Any water that falls in there and collects is going to be working down toward the Hunterston Retention Pond at the bottom. What that all means is that you're going to get a tremendous amount of water come down through Hunterston. And then on top of that, you're going to try to put on top of that what Abbey Town water runoff would put in there anyway. So, now you've got several, you know, eight, nine, ten homes in that area that are at potential for a hundred-year or even a five-hundred-year type flood event. I witnessed one of those down in Houston where I lived for twelve years, just several years ago, where they allowed folks to build next to a creek. And they had a hurricane remnant come up through Houston area, and it just sat on it and just pumped water on it. The creeks rose, creeks rose very quickly. And all of a sudden, they've got five feet, six feet, eight feet of water in their houses. And I'm sure you've seen plenty of the footage of that. And it goes down within, hopefully, you know, a day or so, but the damage is done. The houses are flooded out. Excuse me. The houses are flooded out. And this is the, the major problem, that, that you can't throw money at this problem because of the landscape of where it lives. That this development in here is going to end up putting the absorption ability of the Abbey Town area, it's going to diminish it. So, that all you need now, it's going to be fine if, if there's no rain or there's moderate amount of rains, half an inch, an inch or so, and it can, it can be managed. Anything more than a moderate amount of rain where you get an issue of some kind or, or an event of some kind, there's going to be flooding. And that's, that's my major concern for my neighbors. Me, I'm up the hill. It doesn't, it's not going to affect me, but it's going to affect my neighbors. And it's going to really cause some, some issues there. The, I'd like to, that's the, I'll leave that technical side of the, of the presentation alone. And now, I want to put on my PMP hat and talk a little bit more about systems and managing that. And I think my neighbors in the previous testimony have, I think, very eloquently stated what they had to say. And that is that there is a number of problems that are going to come up, from school to traffic to, to water runoff. All of these are, are problems that are endemic within this whole development plan. Now, to be sure, MI Homes, Brad has done a, a good job of trying to address these, put it forth. But he's put it forth as, well, we can just put some money on this and we can, we think we can deal with the issues and they'll go away or they won't be a problem. My concern is, is that it won't be a problem until we have a problem. And that's, somebody gets hit, or Kevin's my name that I was thinking of. Until Kevin's assumption that in the dark on a sidewalk, somebody gets hit. Or you have a large event of weather. You have, you've got to figure out a way to get the kids across the Pippin-West Kemper intersection and to school. They're on the road on either the right side or the left side from that intersection all the way up to the school. You've got to deal with just the traffic. And then also, the expectation that, that the neighborhood has of, this is a rural community, we're, we purchased out here for the ability for us to be able to have some land, have some separation from our neighbors, have some quiet peace, and, and just not have to live in a very dense neighborhood. That's what most of the folks here have said in one way or the other. This development is violating, I think, the trust that the citizenship has with coal rain of wanting to have. No one's against our four, of putting in something with half an acre, third of an acre, something with, that, that's maybe a little bit more spacious than the Hunterston is. But having something where people have some homesteads, like we see there that Kevin, the hunters, others have in there, that they've been able to say, hey, this is my home. You know, maybe I want to retire here, or I'm going to raise my family. I want to have a yard, some acres, some separation from the neighbors. This is, this is what they have asked for. And they've committed to and purchased land here and residences. And now, you have that being put at risk for their expectations of what the neighborhood values would say like. From an MI Home perspective, I, I can understand why this is a lucrative property. Number one, first of all, it's close to Cincinnati, 275. You've got great access to the city, to work, to coal rain, to perhaps, if you want to go out in the country, you don't have to go that far. It's, it's a nice property to develop on. It's a little challenging because you've got some geographic features there along Kemper. And you've also got some soggy areas that are over there, just below our property, that are a little bit tougher. So, you've got, let up again a little bit. So, you've got up there, under our property, there's, in the corner there where there, the homes are not being developed, are, there's some area there that just, it's, it's not conducive to putting homes on. So, that's, the, the density of the homes is further up into the brown area there that's been talked about before. So, with all of that, you have these issues. But it's still lucrative because, first of all, you've got a lift station down in Hunterston that you can use to take your sewage out. You can run your utilities in. We can put some sidewalks in and things like that. We can try to, so we have a way to get kids in. We have maybe a turn lane or, or even a light or something down there that would allow traffic in and out. I understand that MI Homes has invested some money in, in this, and they're trying to make this go forward. But the, the motivation that, I, I can't speak to the motivation, but what I can see is there's a great deal of, of gain for them to, to make it in this. This fence that was described, I received a letter from Brad that asked if, if I, that they would agree to put the fence in and, and they would take care of it. There was some, they take care of the little panhandle piece between the Suites property and our property and things like that. If I wouldn't contend with this issue. It was basically saying, hey, if you sign off this letter, we'll do this. And then we won't, you know, then you won't bring up any of these issues, like stormwater or anything else. Basically, a letter saying, you know, just don't bring up the issues. I don't like that. That really rubs me the wrong way. And it makes me angry because I'm trying to be bought off by someone to allow the issue to not be brought up and dealt with properly. I am concerned that, I've only been here four years, but I've been, and I, but I plan to stay here. And my concern is, is that this is setting up the neighborhood and this whole area for, for a problem that we can avoid now if we don't deal with, if we don't allow them to come in. come in and rezone the area. R4 is what it's zoned at. I think everyone's fine with that. However, what I'm concerned about is if we go down this road of putting the development in and allowing the, these problems to throw some money at them and, and let's hope that they don't happen. I'll leave you with this. Out of Southampton in about 1913, there was a large ship that sailed to New York. And brand new ship, top of the line, they wanted to make a speed record. And what ended up happening is they threw caution to the wind. Hey, icebergs, ah, we can, we, we won't have a problem. What ended up happening is, is they thought that this was going to be just a cakewalk getting through this until they encountered an iceberg that overwhelmed them. And there was the catastrophic end to this story. Y'all know that I'm talking about the Titanic. My concern is, is I'm not trying to be a doomsayer or anything like that. But what I'm saying is there's issues here, there's problems that have not been addressed. They've been, some words have been said and some approaches have been made to them. But there's some problems here because of this geography that have not been addressed and they can't be addressed here. My recommendation, I would like to humbly put before the board is that if they want to develop R4, fine. If they want to put something more dense in there, then all of these issues need to be addressed satisfactorily so that the current residents are willing to say, okay, yeah, we, we see that there's enough that's been done here. So this is the, this is my presentation to the, to the Board of Trustees. Are there any questions or anything that you'd like to ask me or would like me to further discuss?
I took some notes and I'll bring them up when we go to discuss this in the meeting. So please stay tuned.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes. Okay, the people want to speak in the public hearing?
Yes, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I would recommend a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussions?
Not from me.
Okay. Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Okay.
We'll take a quick.
We got a motion to have a five-minute break?
Sure.
All right.
Motion for that.
All right, I'll second it. And we'll be back.
Do we need to vote, do we need to vote on that?
We got a vote on it?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
It's back in session now. Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
It's 9:18 right now, Jeff, for your notes.
Okay, the, the next to the agenda is the citizens' address.
Oh, we've got two other.
No, wait a minute. Two more hearings, right? The most beholden public hearing on a zoning map amendment, ZA 202102, commercial map amendment.
I'll motion to hold a public hearing on zoning amendment, ZA 202102, commercial map amendment.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
None.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. And my understanding is no one here is here to speak on this public hearing. So I would recommend a motion to close the public hearing. And Mr. Iona will provide information on this item when it's up for a, a vote later in the trustee meeting.
I'll motion to close the public hearing on zoning map amendment, ZA 202102, commercial map amendment.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
None.
None.
Okay. Roll call please.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Okay, then the next is a motion to open a public hearing for zoning text amendment, ZA 2020-05, massage parlors.
I'll motion to open a public hearing for zoning text amendment, ZA 202005, massage parlors.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussions?
No.
None.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
There's no one here to, you know, talk about.
That is correct. So I will recommend that we close the public hearing via motion. And again, with this item, when it comes before us later, we'll have staff provide testimony and background.
I'll motion to close the public hearing for zoning text amendment, ZA 202005, massage parlors.
I'll second it.
Any discussions?
None.
None.
Roll call please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Good, thank you. The next on the agenda is the citizens' address. And we have one email from Ms. Stephanie Wright.
Yes.
And you want to read and answer that?
We have one email from her. And then there was another email from Ellie McVeigh that she had requested that we read at the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, but I'm happy to read that tonight as well if, if that pleases the Board.
Sure.
Okay. So I'll go ahead first with Mrs. Wright's citizen address. It says, "Good evening. I would like to know the status of the following. Simply Recycling, False Alarm Program with the PD. We Thrive, Appointment to the CIC Board. Thank you, Stephanie Wright." To quickly answer those questions, with Simple Recycling, that was a program that we partnered with starting back in 2017. My understanding is that they had taken a pause related to COVID at the start of the COVID season. My understanding is now they are starting to get back into the swing of things. So, you know, that is something that we can certainly consider reaching back out to them. The False Alarm Program with the PD, after speaking with people over in the police department, my understanding is that we are not going to be moving forward with that vendor at this time in researching their systems compared to our systems. They weren't compatible, they couldn't talk. So we have incurred no expenses related to that program and will not moving forward. With We Thrive, it's been difficult for them to meet in person because of COVID restrictions, but that doesn't mean that they haven't been doing good work. This past year, they had the Colrain Give Back Day yet again. 150 different volunteers showed up on that day and all went out into the community to help with emergency home repairs, you know, litter and debris pickup at homes and all kinds of different side projects. It was a, a great day and it was great to see the turnout. Some other things that, that the We Thrive group has been involved in, there's a, a group called Side-by-Side Ministries that's been putting up little libraries throughout the township. We Thrive has been happy to assist them in those efforts. This included working with the Chamber of Commerce to have a, a big event toward the end of last year, trying to get people to donate books that could then go into these little libraries that are throughout our community so that kids would have more opportunities to, to read. And then even beyond that, some of our faith-based community partners that are part of the We Thrive initiative have been working closely with Public Health. We Thrive is a public health program to facilitate vaccinations, testings, and other things related to COVID. So lots of great things coming out of the We Thrive group. And then the appointment to the CIC Board, I believe that you all spoke about that at the last CIC meeting. I would imagine that you all would provide more direction on that as, as that next meeting comes up.
We, we, the very first meeting we had, when I took over as president, we voted to have an additional person. And as discussions went on, we have, we have those, those applications or resumes, as discussions went on, we found that the, the more appropriate mechanism would be the CDC for more community involvement. I have met with Home, Home, Mr. Mills and I met with Hamilton County and, and Home, I, I can't think of their name right off. The one that, that partners with the CDCs throughout the community. And, and we're going to be meeting, I should have a confirmation email probably right now, meeting with Northbrook, folks from Northbrook and folks from Grossbeck as well as moving a CDC as a mechanism for more community involvement. We still have the additional slot that's open on the CIC, but I think that when we last discussed it, we want to use it as a strategic slot to bring some added value and let the community voices be heard through the CDC, which would make it broader. And that's, I think, what we discussed the last CIC.
Thank you, Matt. And the other citizen comment that we received from Ellie McVeigh is, is as follows. "Trustees, I want to bring your attention a very troubling issue with the Consulting Services Agreement with Energy Alliances, Inc., DBA Cost Management Alliances. The contract executed between Colrain Township and Energy Alliances, Inc. is puzzling. Up until June of this year, they were known, only known as Energy Alliances, Inc. In June, they issued a DBA with the Ohio Secretary of State as Cost Management Alliances. This company, according to their website, is primarily a utility broker. Rumpke Consolidated is not a utility as per the Supreme Court of Ohio. We are contracting with them to obtain bids for waste collection services. Energy Alliances, Inc. experience in this area is anemic or non-existent according to the website. But the most puzzling is item number four in the contract, ownership of report and protection of confidential information, which essentially prohibits any resident or anyone else in obtaining via open records any of the bid information. This is not the transparency that is spoken of over and over. This is a reflection of a dark governance when bids for services are hidden or cloaked behind a service provider. We ask that you file a resolution to declare that all bids will be subject to open records request and that going forward, no bids for any services shall be cloaked behind a broker or service provider. I also find the fact that this contract does not appear to be executed on Colrain Township paper. In negotiating with the service provider, the township must negotiate all the terms and conditions as well as have the contract executed on Colrain Township paper. If I am in error in understanding the confidentiality clause in this agreement, please bring that to light during the meeting. Thank you, Ellie Coke McVeigh." To speak on that, so far, I hope that we've, we've displayed that we are going to be as transparent as possible. The bid specs and the bid documents that have been released to the public are available on our website. And it has been my intention from the start to make bid documents available once they're received from various vendors at the conclusion of this process. So I don't know if that satisfies the request or not, but I'm happy to answer any questions on this item or the other citizen address item.
So I, I spoke to Ms. McVeigh about this. I think her concern is that in the wording of the way it's worded, so I don't know if we could go through that again to make sure. I, I read it a little bit differently as in that the confidentiality was up until when the bids were open because you don't want somebody sneaking in under the wire and underbidding somebody for a dollar that, based upon published bids. Am I misunderstanding that?
To, to your point, with these types of processes, we typically will not open any of the bids until after all of the bids are received, which is at the expiration of the bid submission time. So I think that is March 26th, so this Friday is, is the bid submission date. And so, you know, hopefully, maybe not, you know, by this weekend, but early next week, we'll have those ready to go and, and available.
So then we can definitely say for sure that, that these things will be, that, that the bid, that the bids will be published, public, available for anybody to see that wants to request it or even online.
Barring anything that may be from a, an NDA standpoint, but I'm not aware of anything that, that would be there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That conclude, that concludes the citizens' address. The next on the agenda is new business.
Thank you, Board. We have four items of new business tonight, all in the Planning and Zoning Department. And I will invite Mr. Iona up to the board.
Thank you, Board. The first item for business this evening is the.
Mike.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, the first item for business from the Planning and Zoning Department this evening is a resolution to approve case ZA 2021-01, and that's changing the zoning on the site in question. This is the Abbey Town Development from R4 and R6 to PDR to allow for the construction of 68 detached single-family homes. And staff is recommending adoption of this resolution.
I'll motion to adopt, to approve zoning case ZA 202101, changing the zoning on the site from R4 and R6 to PDR to allow for the construction of 68 detached single-family homes in order to open up discussion. I will motion.
I will second it to get it to the floor.
Any discussions?
Sure, I'd like to, and if Brad's here, if I could ask him a question. One of the, one of the, in response to some of the things that were brought up during the public hearing, the lot size, if you take the number of houses divided by that piece of land, is it, isn't it 15,000 something feet, including the green space? If you figure in all the green space, those lots aren't, I mean, yes, they're smaller lots and the houses are closer together, but if you take the whole parcel and divide by the number of houses, because I know the comparison was made to, to Hunterston, which is 14,000 and. Go back to that, the, the one that just had the statistic on it.
So the asterisk at the bottom provides that number. It's 15,743 square feet. And that's a number that's in the staff report in the staff packet.
Right. And there was a, a comment about a third of an acre lot, if there's 2.38 units per acre, that is a third of an acre. It's, it's, it's a little more than a third of a, third of an acre.
That's, that's the whole purpose of PUD is to preserve natural space and, and take the square footage, preserve it, but I end up with a really lesser density than otherwise could be provided.
Okay. And then, yes, I'm, I'm concerned about stormwater too, but that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. If, if, however the Board votes on this, it still needs to go to Hamilton County Stormwater for final approval. Is that correct?
That is correct. Your zoning code does not address stormwater and township's really not charge of stormwater design as a function of the Hamilton County.
Because water flows from township to township to city and that, that's a county function. So we're not.
So they have to look at the county in whole. So it's, it's better to have it under their, their purview, quite frankly.
Right. So that, that's not, I mean, I appreciate all the statistics and the, and the, you know, the heavy rainfalls and, and all that, but the fact is that's not something we're here to discuss.
Yeah, it's not really a zoning concern.
The, as far as the comprehensive plan, there was a point brought up that a sewer easement was negotiated in 2006. So there, there was an idea that that land was going to be developed at some point 15 years ago.
That's correct.
And, and as far as the traffic on, on the, on the road, that's, you know, a, a county issue. And I don't, I certainly don't want any accidents out there. And I lived on Blue Rock Road for, for 21 years. And I was, it was a racetrack getting in and out of my driveway. And you always had to have your turn signal on. And the last thing I would do is look in my mirror and see how close somebody was on my bumper before I turned in. And it's, where I lived at was where the four lanes headed south, you know, narrow down to two lanes and go past Livingston and around the curve. And it was a challenge getting in and out of there. But that was because of 275 and cross-county all narrow-necked down and, and going in there. And to that end, when I, when I bought that, and I've lived here my whole life, I grew up on Gaines and I bought a house on Blue Rock. And there was eight acres across the street and it was at Weigl's farm. And it had a well, it had a barn that was built in 1860. And behind me, there was 11 acres of woods and, and off a west road. And it was nice to look out my back window and, and see those woods. And Len Grace, one day knocked down all those trees and put Millie's Cork back there. And I didn't like it, but you know, there was a, a bunch of really nice houses back there. And, and then when Mr. Weigl passed away, that land was developed right across the street from me and now it's called Whispering Valley. And I think there's 19 sort of land dominiums over there. So I've, I've certainly owned a house and watched all the land around me get developed. When I was in my twenties, when Mr. Woolenwebber passed away in the early 1980s, Lake Hills was built. That used to all be farmland and, and I remember there was corn back there and all the land south of Springdale and north of Sheed and east of Gaines and west of Blue Rock was all open. And I couldn't tell you how many houses are back there in Lake Hills, but I watched all that get built also. And, and I really like wide open land, but, but, you know, I, that, that land, that property owner is, is entitled to develop his land. And I know if, if, that it, it just happens, you know? I've seen Lake Hills and the stuff behind me and the stuff in front of me. And where I live now, there's 25 vacant acres a half mile down the street. And I'm sure someday that'll be developed too. And I know one of the speakers mentioned she knows where two of the trustees live. Well, if you take Galbraith Road all the way west to Blue Rock, there's a, a nice brick house there. Well, behind that house, there's, there's 20 to 25 acres between there and just south. And you know, I, unless I want to buy that 25 acres, I guess somebody's going to develop it someday. And I, I certainly sympathize with the, the surrounding homeowners, but the, the owner of the land where every town is. every town is proposed is entitled to develop their land. So, and that's from somebody that'll be 59 next month, and I've been here and seen a lot of development in Colrain Township. And I'm, I'm confident if this passes that you will do your best to manage it well, and there will be a period of construction, and you'll manage the construction dust and keep things watered down and then build some nice quality homes. And there's a new school down the street, and if we don't get some new families in here, we're all going to be old families. So I appreciate all your time on this.
Yeah, I appreciate your sentiments, especially property rights of the current owner, you know, rights to be able to develop it consistent with, as Mike has pointed out, consistent with really your underlying code. Regarding the street itself, that Kemper Road is under the purview, and it's really under the authority of the county engineer's office, and that's why we want to go ahead and at least address the traffic concerns and get a full traffic study done. And of course, they have signed off on that, approved it, so.
And all the stuff about the stormwater, that's the next challenge for you. That's, we're just talking about the zoning. I do appreciate everything with the stormwater. I've been there when it was pouring rain. I've seen the water going over that driveway, and I think the retention ponds, and there was some concern about the retention ponds, and you mentioned during your presentation that you establish a bond. So if there's a problem, there's a pot of money there to fix it. They're not going to have to chase you around. You just have to go chase the bond down, which would be held by Hamilton County, I guess.
It would be, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's an insurance policy, a monetary insurance policy to, you know, repair the, you know, do whatever would need to be done with the ponds if there was a failure, so.
Yeah, and, you know, Mohammed at the county is in charge of stormwater review, and he is a professional stormwater engineer. And so, we submitted ahead of time a preliminary calculation. He's approved those. He understands, we understand how follow his regulations or the county's regulations. And there's been a lot of concern by the residents, so he definitely has all eyes on this particular project, and I'm sure he'll make sure we do it right.
I don't have any other comments.
Matt, do you?
Yeah, sure. Excuse me. Thanks for coming out again and for all the hard work. A lot of the things I'm going to probably say, kind of, we'll echo Mr. Unger. So in our federal system of government here, there's a reason that I don't make stormwater decisions. I looked at that math, and I just, it just kind of blew my mind. I mean, I'm a social studies guy, and I think that it's good that I don't make stormwater decisions and traffic decisions, and that's why you have the experts at Hamilton County do that. And one of the things, we talked a couple months ago, I said, get me that traffic study. And you went and got a traffic study, because one of my concerns was safety, too. And I think, excuse me, I think the traffic study lays out nicely what kind of the challenges are. So, you know, as far as stormwater, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's going to be a problem, and I don't even know what I don't know about stormwater. And that's why you get Mohammed Islam and the county to do that. As far as the comprehensive plan, I see the comprehensive plan is suggesting less density, and that's what you've gone back and done. And some things that I didn't even, we didn't even ask for, like a playground, you know, I think that's fantastic. I like the idea that, that we're giving into the sidewalk fund. You know, there was some concern early on about the average price point. Those concerns have probably blown right by us with the way the market is today. If you take a look at the Cincinnati MLS, the average house in Colrain Township lasts about two days. I think right now, there's none up, none, if you search Colrain east and west. There was one, there were two up about a week ago over on the west side, and they lasted maybe a day. So it's a, you know, it's a good time to allow an opportunity for new families. And one of the things that one of the gentlemen did say is that representative of greater community and not a single interest. You know, I think about greater community. I think greater community good is, is in many ways kind of expanding the community and bringing in, as Mr. Unger said, new families, new families to the school system, bringing in single-family homes that are going to raise their families there and are going to become lifelong Colrain residents, and I appreciate that. And, you know, as a long, long-in-the-tooth social studies teacher and American government teacher, you know, I go back to individual property rights. Every single right we enjoy in this country originates with individual property rights, and you have the right to your three or four acres, and if you want the three or four acres next to you, you buy it. But you don't have the right to enjoy that. And I think that, you know, I think that there's kind of a tendency to just, just fight change because you like the way things are. And, you know, Mr. Unger talked eloquently about that, and a barn built in 1860, which is incredible, the year of the Civil War. So with all that in mind, you know, I think that the zoning commission voted 5-0. We have the density reduced. We have the staff recommendation. We have Hamilton County engineers signing off. We have the fire signing off. We have a traffic study. You know, we have, the engineers are going to look at the stormwater issues, and I see no reason why I would overrule at this point what the, what the, what the commission said in the 5-0 vote, which is essentially the same position I took last time. I didn't overrule what they said. They had turned it down, and you've come back with a lot of amenities that I think helped. What's the name of the fence, a Kentucky split fence? What is that?
A split rail fence.
Okay, just the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But, yeah, but thank you so much, and thank you for your patience, and, you know, sometimes this stuff gets, I always tell my students, governments like making sausage or hot dogs. Boy, they taste good, but sometimes you don't want to see how they're made, because it gets messy sometimes. And this was a long, drawn-out process, but everybody stayed patient, and I'm happy to support this at this point.
I'll go. Thank you again for coming back and redeveloped this single-family homes. You made a lot of change. You listened to the people. You also, we also listened to the people they spoke tonight. That's very critical. We have Kathy Hunter, Calvin Hunter. They talked about how they are, you know, grew up in this area, raises family. They like to see that part of the place is beautiful, and they are worried about the density. Somehow, I don't know, you come up with the figure 68 homes, single-family homes. I don't know how they feel, you know, they like, Ms. Hunter talked about how she grew up in the area now is going to be very crowded and stuff like that. You come up with a plan, the zoning approved it. You are very consistent with building a plan, and you come back, you made a lot of changes. What I'd like to see, you do it again, you know, that the density, see if you can talk to them, how you can reduce the homes, 68 homes and the plans, something you come up with that idea or redevelop the plan. If we reduce the number, you know, the, what I see from this public hearing, from the last public hearing, and there is no, you know, much of, you know, there's very small discrepancy, you know. And you see, number one, the density. Number two, the sidewalk. The other gentleman came and spoke about the, you know, about the sidewalk, how it would be dangerous, something you work with the engineers, the county engineers, work with the township, the sidewalk issues. You may reconsider that, the plan, okay? Somehow, they are afraid of safety for the children's. Some kids will get hit. It's a big concern. And something that you might reconsider or re, you know, replan that sidewalk things, how are you going to do this? Okay? These are two concerns, like Matt said, stormwater. The gentleman come up with the scientific evidence, how the stormwater is. Like other trustees said, we don't any, how can you control the township? Something you also would look into that, all the information he gave, redevelop the plans, you know, something. These are the three, actually, my two concerns is listen to the people that talk about the density. Also, listen to the people that they're afraid, how the sidewalk is going to cause effect on the children's. If somebody got hit, man, those are big, big mistakes that we ever made. We never forget myself. I never forget myself. So I would strongly suggest, I know there's two trustees, very supportive of your plan, I'm supportive of your plan. I even talked to you, and I encourage you go and talk to the residents. You did. You listened to them. You come up with the change of plans. But what I urge you, one more time, you listen to all this conversation, all the concerns, see what you can do. What makes them safer place the neighbors to live? How much this, this, this new project will affect them? Give them a confidence. That's all I'm asking you. Okay? All right?
So Board, I believe the.
I motion to call a question.
Huh?
Oh, can we do that?
Sure.
Motion for a vote?
Are we already?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Already on the floor?
All right, let's have.
If everybody's done speaking, I guess we would.
Yep.
So one more thing. So you will talk to that, about, think about the density issues. I'd like to urge you to do that, okay?
Well, and what's to communicate with the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout the project. I'm sure you're going to get to know them even better.
Yes.
Yes.
They can call me direct, and we'll have site attendants on site for any stormwater concerns.
Please make sure they all have your phone number.
Absolutely.
Make sure that sidewalk plan is very safe, because we don't want any children, anybody got hit on that.
None of us got hit.
Yes. Okay, any further?
None from me.
None.
Okay, Mr. Baker, go ahead, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We look forward to a great project. Appreciate your support.
Thank you for your patience and all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. The next item on the agenda is actually connected to this last item, and that is a resolution approving application for sidewalk waiver. We recommend adoption of the resolution. Mr. Iona is here to answer any questions you may have.
I motion to approve a sidewalk waiver along Kemper Road.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
Yes, the purpose of the sidewalk waiver is to, is the developer pays us a certain amount of money, and it was mentioned in the presentation, and we will use that money for sidewalks, but not exactly in that location.
It's a fee-in-lue payment, so, yes, so they can't provide the sidewalk at that location. That money does go to a sidewalk fund to be used to provide sidewalk.
I just wanted that explained for those, for those that are watching, so.
Correct, yes.
And it looks like there's a plan to get through that development with a sidewalk, and I guess we would use some of that money as detailed in the plan that would go to connect that sidewalk, and the rest of it would go into our general sidewalk fund for, you know, wherever else we needed to put sidewalks in.
So all the dollars would go in from our general sidewalk fund? The way our fund is set up right now, we would have to bring forward action for you all to appropriate dollars to do any sidewalk project, and so should you all tell us as staff that you would like to have us bring forward dollars to do that sort of project, we'll get that in future.
I just wanted to get that part of the discussion out there.
So this is kind of a, kind of a real picky point by me, but if that, that money that comes from this to the sidewalk fund, I would like to be used as close as we can to that development, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Because I think it's, it's part of the benefit that, that the citizens that live there are getting from, from the deal, so to speak, is, is, you know, I wouldn't want it to be used like in my neighborhood or something.
That's a fair point, and we can certainly prepare items moving forward, whether it's, you know, in the next month or with the next budget to get these things in line.
I know it'll be hard to separate these out in lieu of payments, but this is enough of, I think, a thing.
There's work up there to be done, Matt, so I'm confident we can use it in that area.
Okay, great, thanks.
No, nothing else from me.
Okay, like, again, the sidewalk, what I just mentioned about, we got to do it very carefully, okay? Very safely, we'll develop the plan. Okay, if, if no further questions, roll call, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
The next item before you is a resolution to approve zoning case ZA 2021-02, and that's changing the zoning on the site from R7 to PDB, and that would allow for the construction of a parking lot. This item was in the staff packet that was sent out to you. Nobody showed up for that public hearing. All the information was contained in the staff packet and conveyed to you when that was posted. As such, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. If there are none, you can go ahead and proceed with action on the motion.
Well, I'll go ahead and motion to approve zoning case ZA 2021-02, changing the zoning on the site from R7 to PDB to allow for the construction of a parking lot.
And I will second it.
Any discussions?
And just for the, so the public knows, that's the little piece of land down by Grossback Park.
Yes.
That's currently unused and covered in weeds, and this will give the, a business that's nearby that recently entered an agreement to purchase it, to allow them to use that lot for their business.
Yep. So it's, yep, it's directly, it's on the slide now, it's directly adjacent to Colrain, I think it's Colrain Crossings. That's the shopping center that you see right off of the, right by the interchange at Ronald Reagan on Colrain Avenue, and the park, parcel of question.
I'm told there's a Dunkin' Donuts there.
Yes, there is.
I'm told, I don't know.
There is a very small site here that's currently a part of Grossback Park, so.
Right. No other comments from me.
Matt, do you got any discussions? If there's no discussions, Mr. Baker, a roll call, please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. The next item is a resolution to approve a text amendment to the zoning resolution adding regulations, including definitions for massage therapy and massage parlors. Again, this information was in the staff packet. I'll briefly touch on what the application was. We were tasked by the Board to create regulations for massage parlors to make sure that massage services were being provided in the township in a manner that it does not adversely impact the public health, safety, welfare, and that these operations are being operated on the up and up. The way that we approached this was, we reached out to our legal counsel, we did research on best practices in the region, what has worked and what hasn't. We learned from that research, and what we came up with was two definitions to regulate massage parlors. And one of those definitions defines the bad massage parlors or the massage parlors that offer legal activities and that generally become an attractive nuisance in a community. And then we had a definition for the massage therapy, which is massage therapy, those are the, the good actors that we want in our community that provide a benefit to our residents. So those are the two definitions that we've added to the zoning resolution, and then we go on to permit massage therapy, because that's now a new use. We promote, we permit massage therapy, again, that's the good massage services, in those same zoning districts that we currently permit other medical and dental uses. So staff is recommending that you approve and adopt this motion.
I, I motion to approve a text amendment to the zoning resolution adding regulations, including definitions for massage therapy and massage parlors.
I will second it to get it to the floor.
Any discussions?
Yes, so this has been reviewed by counsel.
It has.
And it looks like you've got the ORC cited in it, and any of these businesses were on pretty good ground, that if they would say, why are you denying me? We've got all that researched and built into this.
Correct.
And, and I would just, once again, say if anybody's aware of any of that type of activity, report it to our police department.
Exactly, that would be the perfect step. If there's something that would be illegal going on, it's not a zoning matter, it's just an illegal use.
Right. And whether it's in a, in a massage parlor, if somebody's running something out of their house or anything, it'll be a better Colrain if you see things, report them, you know, and we don't want that going on in a business with a sign out in front or anywhere else. And, you know, in this day and age. or, or anywhere else, and, you know, in this day and age with so much stuff online and, and, you know, if somebody's running something illegal out of somewhere, you know, report it, our police will investigate it, so I have no other comments.
Just a quick question and then, and then a comment, so how does this apply to current? Because it's a, it's a, it includes definitions, so the regulations would have to apply to the current?
So we would administer it based on these adopted regulations if you all approve it tonight.
Right, okay.
Currently, what we do is, I mean, you know, they're permitted, massage parlors, I think are permitted as a commercial use, if somebody comes in for a massage parlor, we ask them for certification now.
Right.
Which is that extra step, but what this does is it really puts it on the books and gives us something to hang our hat on, and it's, Mr. Unger had said, you know, we have O R C references in the definitions, and it's pretty well locked up, it's been through legal review.
So I, I'm very thankful that, that originally, you know, we kind of worked out something that, or I kind of presented something that had its, had some flaws in it, Mr. Unger pointed out that, you know, what about legal massage therapists that are licensed, and that was never my intent, so this is, I think, a nice, a happy median to, to get, as you said, the bad actors and the, the nuisances out, and we just, just turn on the news and see what this can lead to. I mean, it's unfortunate, but, but what, a week ago, and the individual that went into those places in Atlanta cited a, a sex addiction. Now, I think that there's some racial components too, but, I mean, imagine if those areas, I don't know if it's township or city or whatever, had acted a little sooner to kind of blunt that, we don't need that here. And I'm so happy that, you know, that, that you guys were able to put something together that hopefully satisfy, satisfy all three of us, that we can move forward, and, you know, we talk about economic development, and somebody a couple weeks ago challenged me to define economic development, and, and when I came up with my definition, the one part of the definition I included is a better, a better quality of life for all the citizens, and that's kind of broad with economic development. This is economic development in my view, because it's, it's improving the quality of life for citizens, and it, it sounds like it's a little bit out of the box, but the people in Grossbeck don't think it is, or the people in, in areas that could be impacted by this. So I'm so thankful that you were able to put this together and include those legal folks that, that, that Mr. Unger was speaking about, if you're licensed, you shouldn't be shut down, yeah, you're doing the right thing, so I appreciate it.
If, no more discussions, Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, the next on the agenda is executive sessions, we don't need.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, then the calls for the gentleman, next.
I would motion that we adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-eight P M.
I second it, any discussions? Roll call, please, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Unger.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Waller.
Aye.
The board of trustee meeting is adjourned.